Good evening. The recess for the Planning Board's 12th meeting of fiscal year 2020 is now over, and we are resuming our meeting. Administrative items on our agenda, our next meeting dates are January 9th and 23rd of 2020. This is our last meeting of the calendar year. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. You, too.
Approval of minutes. We have a pretty full agenda tonight, and I would like a chance to review the minutes. I'd like to defer those unless there's an objection.
Sure. That's fine.
Okay. Okay. We had asked Allison, our Assistant Town Planner, to prepare a letter of support for the Milton Historical Commission's request that the Select Board appoint a Historic District Study Committee as part of looking at whether historic districts should be adopted in Milton. So that letter was distributed to all of us, and if everyone is supportive of the letter, then we will go ahead and ask Allison to send that to the Select Board.
So moved.
Okay. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Great job, Allison. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. We have Town Council here, and Town Council provided the Board with some comments on the draft Milton Village overlay zoning. So we're going to take something out of order for the purposes of questions of Board members of Town Council, and then we're going to defer the rest of that discussion and go back to the regular order on our agenda. But I do want to give people the opportunity after that to either speak at Citizens Speak or wait until you can have an opportunity to speak as we go through each item on the agenda. So if you'd like to hear our discussion before you speak, or if you want to give us your comments before that, you're welcome to do that as well. But first, Kevin Freitag, Town Council.
You just need a copy. Rich and I got one.
You got yours. Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so I did have a couple of questions for Mr. Freitag on the Milton Village topic. So we can talk as a Board more about this. I was thinking of Historic District. Allison and I were, we have a wonderful new addition to our Town Planning Office, and Alice has some wonderful insights about a Historic District that I wanted to explore further with her. But if we were to go through with the current language, I was wondering if Mr. Freitag could help explain the legal role that the Historic Commission can play in the Village language and in the Village.
Absent a Historic District? Without a Historic District?
Yes, without a Historic District. If we rush it to May, if we put this in in May, we don't have a Historic District. So we would be going with the current overlay language. Are there things in the current overlay language that would allow the Historic Commission to have a legal role?
Yeah, so I think the answer to that is the role, if any, would be purely advisory. Historical commissions are a creature of statute. They're created by Master in Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8. That statute doesn't give them any specific authority in this type of a situation. So it's really whatever deference or authority you choose to give the Historical Commissions in this instance is what they would have. But on its face, they don't have any other than to be purely advisory.
But if we did a Historic District, then the Historic Committee that gets created through the Historic District would have some legal power, if you will?
I think I'd have to...
Or a legal role.
Right. I think that would depend on a couple of different factors. I don't know that I can give you a great answer to that question right now.
Okay, that's fine. I'll send you an email after, and we'll follow up, if that's okay. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything.
So I think I had met with a colleague of mine from the city, and she had explained some different ways in which to engage a Historic Commission. And one of the roles would have, would, as you just pointed out, going and applying through the masses to the masses to become a Historic District in the sense that you then have regulatory authority over, you know, certain standards of building finish. And then there are other ways to include the Milton Historic Commission that have less regulatory teeth. But I don't know at what point, you know, that would be discussion, if it would be as they're going through the process of identifying which districts they want to incorporate in their survey. But, you know, I think we need to kind of further parse that out down the line and have follow-up conversations.
My understanding from when the Chair of the Historical Commission came to us some time ago to ask for support for this, the letter that we just spoke about was that the process by which local Historic Districts are established is set out by the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and there's a document that they have on their website where it's all laid out. And it begins with a study, a committee, and that committee's appointed by the Select Board. And the, some of the factors that come into play is that the property owners have to agree to be within the district, and then they'll be bound by whatever standards are put into the district. So if a standard is you can't change a paint color without Commission approval, then that, they would be bound by that. But what gets put in as standards comes about through that whole process. So it's a lengthy process. I think it's at least a year and a half, if I'm not mistaken. I see at least one member of the Historical Commission here, and if I've misstated anything...
No, I think you're correct.
Okay. That's the understanding. So that's why, I mean, the Board, I think, at prior meetings expressed some frustration that that committee had not yet been established because the request went in, I think, at least over a year ago. And the Board supports that study starting because there are not just this district but other areas people are, might be interested in. So that, I think, in terms of whether we can discuss as a Board whether the timing of that study and the potential of districts relative to this zoning. But as far as a regulatory power at this time, the Historical Commission doesn't have that regulatory power that some have suggested might be included in this. This has come up when the Master Plan Implementation Committee was working on this as well, and John Flynn, who is retired as Town Council, had provided basically that same opinion to the Master Plan Implementation Committee about the advisory role.
I edit the chapter on Historic Preservation in the MCL book on Environmental Law. I forgot I did that. And so there it was, in the chapter I looked up the other day. And so I don't think that there is a conflict if the local Historic District does get established later on. That those rules and regulations will apply, and they, you know, they don't really bump up against the overlay district. I mean, it's sort of a two-approval process.
Sure.
So you have the overlay district, and just like you have to go to the Conservation Commission for conservation approval, and we don't have anything to say about that, if they establish a Historic District properly and it gets approved by two-thirds vote at town meeting, then that's a separate approval process that our overlay district wouldn't impact adversely.
Okay. Other questions for Kevin?
Yeah. The language around the bonus floors, just, I just wanted to make sure that the...
Is there a section you can refer all of us to?
I'm sorry. I haven't been working from the right version. I only got a new version today, so I've been, it's about the bonus.
It was only slightly different.
Still the same numbers.
Yeah, very slight differences.
I think it's four. Bonus incentives on Adams.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Well, I just wanted to see how the funds work legally. I just want to make sure that the language around the funds, just sort of, I just wanted an explanation on how the funds work in a legal sense, and...
So on page two, under Section 4.
Yeah.
Page two, Section 4. The bonuses for, on Adams Street, for district improvement, for affordable housing, and for historic preservation?
Right.
Okay.
So I just remember when we were coming up with funds for the traffic mitigation, I mean, there was, that was a, you had to do things a certain way and everything. You had to create a fund, and you had to, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we had that all.
Yeah, I think we did, the Master Plan Implementation Committee identified that we would need some new funds established. One for a business, the improvement districts of the public realm, we were calling that the district improvement incentive. And then also historic preservation, if we continue with that, that that would need its own fund as well. So there's some questions. I think I'm familiar with these kind of district improvement funds. I'm a little less familiar with whether historic preservation fund, one property makes a contribution into the fund, and then a different property can apply for the use of those funds. So I don't, I think we would need to understand, I guess, how those may have worked in other places. But the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is already established.
Right.
Right.
So I didn't know, I just wanted to hear from Town Council on that, and I don't expect an answer tonight, but it...
Well, I'm happy to respond to it.
Oh, thank you.
I think the best way to do that, though, is for me probably to, if you send the question to me, I'm happy to sort of respond to it in writing and then follow up with any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else, any questions for Town Council on the zoning? Okay. Kevin, thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to Citizens Speak. Is there anyone here who would like to address the Board at this time? Please come forward and give us your name and address.
My name is Steve Jeteal. I live at 85 Adams Street. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in another discussion that involves Milton Village. The Planning Board devotes countless hours to research, preparation, and collaborating with town officials. That takes away from your personal and family lives, so your sacrifices are appreciated. Apparently now is the time to remedy what has long eld Milton Village, which is under investment and deferred maintenance. There's a housing crisis in Boston, which is contributed to by the Seaport District, but it's generally covered pretty well in today's Boston Globe. It's just a situation we all know about, and it's affecting even our neighborhood because we're on the red line, obviously. It seems to be one of the reasons why we're talking about this overlay. So as with many endeavors, I think you'd have some core values going into it. I was once part of a planning process where we were developing a plan, a master plan, and in which case we had developed some options. There were some core ideas they had, and then we came up with three options, and one was preferred. And the night before the big presentation, the client representative came to me and he shuffled the deck, and he said, "We're going to do some things different." And at that point, I was supposed to make the presentation, and my cage was a little rattled, so needless to say, the presentation didn't go very well. And it turned into debate among the shareholders, who had different opinions and career trajectories. And I had little voice in the matter. I was just making the presentation. But I did learn that it was probably very important to have your core values lined up, have very good communication. I could have worked more across the board to be a better diplomat. But we've been doing this for two years, I think two years approximately, one way or another. And it started because there was a waterfront development, and we somewhat in our neighborhood learned about it accidentally. So we started coming to a seminar, the first seminar by MAPC, in which we were asked to pick finish materials, like slab boards versus shingles. And that was very confusing to us because we didn't know why we were doing this. But we wanted it to look, we all agreed, we wanted it to look traditional. That was the, seemed to be the overwhelming consensus because Milton seems to be a traditional town, whatever that means. So, long story short, we're here today, and I guess we're talking about the MAPC wording that's going to go to town meeting. But in some ways, this is MAPC wording, and it's the Smart Growth Program, and it's coming from the crisis in Boston and the Seaport expanding, the T doesn't work, and the roads are clogged, and we all know this over and over again. But I think that the MAPC, to its credit, does have core values. Unfortunately, I don't think they're Milton derived values. And when I say core values, I say things that have stood the test of time and people generally consider good, and I'll put that in the local sense. You know, in Milton, we have the Forbes House, the Hutchinson Field, Milton Day with the Irish music, the library, the gazebo in front of Town Hall, Cunningham Pool, the trolley, the Milton Yacht Club, the Blue Hills, Voting Day, the post offices, the Masonic Building, the schools, Go Wildcats, the Eustace Estate, the George Bush birthplace, the Suffolk Resolve. So we have many things that make this a very special place. They're public and private. I think the library is a good example of how we took an old thing and we approved on it. And I think that's a good model for what could be done in the Village. But, and hopefully we can, because it's a very historic little area, people don't know that. So, or we could kind of take this thing that's coming down from the state level, and we can solve this housing crisis problem. So I think one of the problems, when the neighbors say they aren't, feel like, they don't feel like they're being heard in this process, I don't think they could be heard because it's not part of the rollout. It was kind of a formula where we had to take it or leave it, and we were contributing to a larger good on the state level. And we understand that we need more affordable housing. But towns have sovereignty, and they wanted, people come to a town for a certain reason, for the schools, or they want low taxes, and a rural setting, and all this type of thing. But I think the super, even the supermajority vote that was rejected recently, I think it shows that people are focused on their main investment and being able to plan a future based on their biggest investment, which is their home. So if your biggest investment is changing in context, you kind of have that uncertainty. So we have discussed the floor heights quite a bit, and we've talked about traffic. But even at this late hour, we have to remember that all these things are negotiable, and we don't have to use the MAPC blueprint. And so that, I just want to still keep an open mind, even to this day. There's the designer selection laws, which talk about how if you're going to do an interior renovation of a, design of a public building, you would, you would use the prequalification process to get the designers on board, and then you'd advertise publicly, and then you'd hire, you'd do a scorecard, and then you'd hire the best score, and then after that, you'd evaluate their performance for the next go-around. And us hiring MAPC was, I don't even know how that happened. And at some points, we did these renderings to support their argument, but so we paid them, but now we're supporting their work. So it, the whole process mystifies me how we got to this point. But here we are. And so there were some, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information to absorb. I think we're just generally exhausted. We're very thrilled this is hopefully coming to an end. But Milton has a rich history of architecture, and it's so distinguished, I have full confidence in the future of the Village one way or another. The energy of the neighborhoods is true and sincere. The momentum over the long term in the direction of good design and involve citizens is so strong that I keep faith that all will work for the good. If the parking and traffic does become unbearable in several years, whatever happens next for current residents will be better somehow. The sequence of events leading us to live in this special corner of the world are undeniable. That spirit will carry us forward with patience, understanding, and excitement for whatever comes next. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you, you're obviously certainly welcome to stick around until we get to this topic later in our discussion, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to do a 23B3 disclosure.
Sure.
Steve is in a neighborhood coalition, as I am, but pursuant to guidance from the State Ethics Commission, I feel that I can be fair and objective in carrying out my official duties as a Planning Board member on this topic. So, thank you, Steve.
Okay, again, we're going to invite folks to speak on particular topics if they'd like to wait till we get to it on the agenda. But knowing that some people may not want to stay throughout, I, again, if anybody else would like to come up and speak to us now during Citizens Speak, yes, if you'd like to, think, come forward. Did you want to say something else before that?
That was it.
Okay.
Didn't want you to miss them.
Okay. Hi.
Hello. Good evening, members of the Planning Board. I am Paulus Araro. I live at 85 Adams Street. I'm a resident of Milton Village. And I have a few things, and I have to express my feelings about what I have about all this. At the last Planning Board meeting on December 6th, I learned, I'm sorry, December 5th, I learned how the daycare center project was handled. The process involved talking to the neighbors, asking questions, and how this will impact their lives. I believe this was the right approach. Milton Village is a different situation. I feel that I am being imposed on that, and I must approve, approve it, I'm sorry. I say this because several times we were told that if the overlay is not passed, much worse development will occur under the existing zoning. I still believe the overlay is, the overlay project will be too big for Milton Village. For example, parking will be another problem in Milton Village with a mixed use. On a perfect day, look good, but who can tell me that everybody else will follow the rules? I mean, I mean, one car per unit, people will use Uber for all situations, and no traffic, no cars, is what I mean. This is unrealistic to me. I'm sorry. I get lost, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Take your time.
And parking is important to me. We park on the street with a hardship permit. If a restaurant like Steel &amp; Ride comes and a park and, and come in, parking will be my problem. And I mentioned this in one of the meetings. The answer was, I can rent a space to park somewhere else, or, and the other answer was, we're not talking about parking at this time. It's okay. Instead, asking me if parking was important or something mattered to me, at least talk about, at least talk about, and we'll work it out. And that is what I will call, or I will call, working with the residents. Until resident, the Planning Board contacted me. This was to attempt to understand what I was talking about and see my situation. I believe this is the right approach. I agree with Mr. Whiteside recently, later. I believe the overlay is too big for Milton Village, and it's very, and it's very presentation. It opens two doors to unwanted real estate speculations, and I believe the Planning Board should be, should be stand, stand out for Milton residents and their welfare and not to be looking for the maximum, the maximum benefit of that developer. And this is the way I look at it. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your, and this is how I feel.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, but I have to leave, so I can't stay.
Okay, all right.
Ellen Anseloni, 22 Morton Road. I live around the corner from the Village. I'm an architect, work in Boston, work with a lot of developers, and I'm just encouraging the Milton Village group...
Excuse me, one second, Ellen. You're also a member of the Historical...
Historical Commission in the Fire Safety Billing Committee.
Thank you.
I work with a lot of developers. There's a lot of expansion into the suburbs, and I encourage the Milton Village Association to work with you guys to get a plan that everybody likes because the developers are coming. So it would be nice to write our story of what we want, as opposed to telling them, as opposed to them telling us what's going to happen. And we see it in, we saw it in East Milton, we see it all around town. So I really encourage everybody to get together and come up with a plan. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, then, Wes Pauls, saying none, we'll move on to the agenda and work our way through. And there will be opportunity to talk, Melinda, but if you would rather speak now, you're welcome to, or you want to take, we're going to...
I didn't know what you were on, so we will...
Okay. Okay. So we're going to move right now, then, to the new business of the Walcott Woods Affordable Housing Zoning Amendment Discussion. And we have Mr. Ned Corcoran, Council, and...
Stephen Gallagher, project manager.
All right.
Stephen is with Northland Residential. He is the project manager for the onsite development.
So, welcome. And we hope that your experiences onsite are going well so far, and that you understand our special permit perfectly.
Bit of memory. I told them many times, when in doubt, make sure you've read the special permit. Make sure you've called the arborist.
Tattooed, I'm sorry.
Don't do anything without the arborist.
All right, so go ahead.
So, thank you. We have been, as you know, the zoning provides somewhat uniquely for the development of off-site affordable housing rather than, as an option to development of affordable housing onsite. And that was a recommendation that came through, I think, a neighborhood, the neighborhood that we took to various boards and then was adopted as part of the zoning. You know, it was the last minute, there was a, an agreement to drop from 58 units onsite to 54, with an agreement to retain six affordables as opposed to drop to five. And Northland is part of its pre-development process, has begun to work on acquisition of properties off-site that can fit the needs of the affordable. We became, enough concern is the right word, but with the, with the, sort of the rush, rush of activity with the PULTI special permit and arriving at an acquisition of some property off-site, we've had a couple of meetings with the HCD, we've met with the Affordable Housing Trust and others to sort of think about, now that we're in the process of actually working on the, under the special permit, as to what's the best way to address the goals and desires of the town with respect to affordability. We had always understood that off-site affordable in locations that approximate the schools, shopping, transportation, et cetera, was, and available for young families as opposed to off-site units, onsite units that are age-restricted, was a more preferred approach. The, as we know, the inventory of properties out there at any given time is pretty tight. And so, given that, and the issues surrounding, that we understand surrounding PULTI, at least with respect to ownership versus rental of two-family units, we thought to suggest a couple of amendments. One, to say that off-site affordables may be provided in either single-family homes, which is a clear preference, or in two-unit homes that could be owner-occupied or rented, understanding that D H C D in particular has a preference for rental in small multifamily units. You know, two-unit condominiums where you have two affordable buyers can be difficult to manage, particularly for long-term maintenance, capital maintenance, how do they get funded? And so, in that case, the preference probably from D H C D would be, in order to approve two, you know, two units on the S H I, they would want to see that those units were potentially owned by, continued to be owned by Northland, or sold to someone else and owned, but with a deed restriction, that the units would be rented or sold for affordable purposes. You would then have a responsible third party, you know, receiving rents, holding funds, making sure that there was funding available... funds, making sure that there was, there was funding available to perform capital maintenance and without the fight that you might get between two buyers. And so, the, the recommendation here would be to suggest that the units could be owned, that not only would they be necessarily single-family, that would, single or, or two families, that would be homeowner-only, that they would be available for, for rental. And then, the second issue is that DHC D standards for minimum unit size and other things varies over time. They've been, you know, for two families, some of their recent agreements show 900 square feet as a minimal size. We know that that was the case in at least one of the two units that was approved for.
On Church Street.
For, on Church Street.
For the PULTI.
That, that, you know, dealing with the, with the reality of the market out there and what's available, that as long as the units meet the minimum requirements for DHC D, as they may change over time, that that's probably a better standard than saying arbitrarily, it needs to have this many square feet, you know, as opposed. So, in that case, we have proposed these two amendments to Section 9D of Section, subsection 9D of Section 10 of the bylaws, which is the greatest state bylaw.
So, you would be requesting that the planning board submit this to the select board for the annual town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So, I know that you've been in discussions with the Affordable Housing Trust and we, and I invited them to come tonight to give us their feedback on this. So, at this time, if there's someone who would like to come and give us some feedback?
Hi, good evening. I am Julie Kramer at 58 Frothingham Street. I am the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust, and I come here today in support of the changes that Northland Development is asking. Northland has been very good about coming to the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Committee and talking through some of their challenges and some of their goals for the off-site units. We also spoke to DHC D at the request of, of Northland and walked them through sort of our discussions that we've held internally with the Affordable Housing Trust in open meetings as well. And we are just happy that they have decided to not reduce the number of affordable units. They're staying with the six, even though they have the option of going down to five. So, we find that that's, you know, a positive and want to support them in their efforts. We also know that they have, Northland has done a great job at Woodmere, their other Milton property, where they have done inclusionary units onsite. So, where they've been able to make that happen, they have. Because these units are 55-plus, we do feel that off-site units actually will provide Milton with more options for rent, for, for homeownership, because the 55 and over band is just smaller. And so, now we're opening this up to, because they're off-site, we're opening this up to a larger pool.
I remember our last discussion, you were disappointed that we lowered the square footage requirement on the last time around. So, I was wondering your thinking this time around.
This time around, the, the product being built, there is a smaller product. The, the homes being built at, at Woodlot Road are much, much larger. These are 55 and over units, so they're smaller. They're, they're more of an empty nester-type home. And so, I'm okay with the reduction in, to the, to the DHC D standard, which, you know, is a published standard, easily accessible. You know, I, I would hope that this doesn't necessarily set a precedent for inclusionary units, but in this case, I support the smaller unit size, because the product coming online is a, is a smaller, downsized unit.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions for Julie? No? Any other questions for Ned or Steve?
Has this been run by town council? I'm guessing that's fine.
I don't think it needs to.
Okay. Well, it goes from us to town council and then to the select board, right?
It's gonna go to county council anyway.
That's what I was asking. So, it does need to, because it always does. Okay, thank you.
It always goes on a warrant, and they look at the warrant maybe, or not.
I have a question.
Yes, April.
So, we believe that this amendment is acceptable for DHC for inclusion on the SHI.
We think so, yes.
And you've had discussions. Julie, did you, did you participate in discussions? Did you say that, I'm sorry?
Yeah, DHC did.
Yes, okay.
And I, I think the language relative to the SHI is, is unchanged with this amendment.
I'm just wondering about that, the model where you could have a deed-restricted, two-family owned and then rented, and both units are affordable. That's not any sort of challenge for DHC D.
We would just have to.
As long as they're deed-restricted, that's fine.
Okay. You know, it, it, they come in different restrictions.
Yep.
Regulatory agreements, but you could have that happen, so that both meet SHI requirements.
Great. Okay, I love it.
We did, we, we met with DHC D a week and a half ago, and I know that you spoke to them since then, because they, they indicated to us that they were gonna reach out to you for separate comment.
Well, and just, again, we know that Julie and Tom Callahan in the Affordable Housing Trust work with DHC D was very helpful to the town with respect to the PULTI development. And we, again, appreciate you guys working together and with DHC D on this, getting ahead of it. And so, thank you for that. Appreciate coming to us with a solution early, early enough. Yes, Rich?
No, yeah, I was just gonna say, so, I'm the planning board's representative on the select board's housing committee, and I've heard, I've been a part of some of these meetings, and I had a similar question, as Julie answered to me the same way. So, I, I agree. And, so, yeah, I've asked my questions in, in our open meetings, and I, I mean, I support it as well.
Okay, in that case then, Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, yeah. I don't really make motions. Do you second?
We can give you a little help with the motion language if you like.
Sure, yeah.
So, that, that the.
As written.
Planning Board would submit this for consideration for this annual town meeting in the spring to the select board as written.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. That's a good team effort.
I'm really glad to lose that 1250 square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that.
Case is so much harder.
It's just gonna be waived anyways, to be real. Okay, I mean, it's gonna be like 1248.
Now.
Yeah, yeah.
Next on our agenda, at our last meeting, we talked about the fact that a, an application had been filed with Mass Housing for a comprehensive permit site plan approval for 47 Blue Hills Parkway as part of the, what we think of as the Chapter 40B process, an application that includes 56 condominium units, we think, but sometimes it says rental.
We're not really sure.
Sometimes it says condominium ownership. We said that we would draft a letter to submit to the select board for their consideration. Rich and I participated in the site walk with Mass Housing with a number of other people.
During the snowstorm?
Yes.
During the snowstorm. I, I provided some thoughts to Kathleen, and thank you Kathleen for drafting a letter for us to consider. So, everybody has a copy of the letter. Just, Kathleen has a ton of experience with these matters, with her role previously on the Board of Appeal and in her professional work.
Unfortunately, she's not getting paid for this.
No. So, do you want to go through it?
That's right. It was a huge bonus when the 40B.
For everyone who's here.
Huge bonus when you got elected to the place.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thanks. So, as you understand the process, so, there's an application that's been filed with Mass Housing for site eligibility approval. So, it's not approval of the project, it's approval of the site, and whether the M.A. Mass Housing thinks it's suitable for a project. And so, as part of that process, they send a letter to the select board saying, hi, this application has been filed.
Could we put the language up on the screen? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, the language of the.
The letter.
The letter to the, yeah. So.
I don't know that I, do we have it?
Oh.
Let's go to the other one.
Which one?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Kathleen. They can look for it while you.
Can you give me a hand? Because this is.
So, anyway, in general, they send a letter to the select board, and they ask the select board for comments, what the considerations should be for this project, whether the town is supportive of the project. I think I have a copy of the letter here.
The letter from Mass Housing?
From Mass Housing.
Right here.
Yeah, thanks. So, it's a letter dated November 27, 2019. It states that Mass Housing is currently reviewing a project for 56 condominium units on approximately 2.03 acres of land located at 4547 Blue Hills Parkway. And so, this is, as I said, part of the beginning of the process for a comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B. And what they are looking for is the appropriateness of the proposal in relation to local housing needs and strategies, and they want to get comments from the local community, and they would appreciate your input, is what it says, quoting them. And you may also wish to include in your response issues or concerns raised by other local boards, capitalized, so that makes us very important, officials or other interested parties. And so, we are providing our comments as a local board with capital letters. So, we've been informed, they say, that the applicant has received, that the town has received a copy of the application. Please, please inform us of any issues that have been raised or are anticipated in the town's review of this application, and they want these comments within 30 days, so they can process the application in a timely manner. And so, the town asked for an extension of time, given the fact that November 27th was like right in the middle of holiday season, and so that they wouldn't have had enough time to generate the comments that would come from maybe the Conservation Commission or other, you know, other local boards besides ours. So, I did a draft letter to the, to, from the planning board to the chair and members of the select board, and that's what was submitted to you folks to take a look at. I did read the application. Cheryl read the application. Rich went on the site walk. I wasn't involved in drafting the zoning for the Ice House project, but I was a town meeting member when they made the presentation, so I've read that. I do, for members of the public, in my prior life, I was a town council for a firm that had represented a third of the cities and towns in Massachusetts. And in the flurry of 40B applications a few years ago, I, I don't know how many I sat on. So, so, and then I was special counsel, full disclosure, to the town, to the Town and Milton Zoning Board for the application filed by the Hendries, on Hendries Plant, and on the Randolph Avenue project, which is under appeal with the land court. So, so anyway.
So, let's go through. So, you found some errors and inaccuracies in the application itself?
Right. And so, I listed a number of things. Basically, some pages, page two says it's a rental project, page four says it's homeownership, somewhere else it says it's rental again, somewhere else it says it's homeownership. Who knows? The purchase and sale agreement was only signed by the buyers, not by the seller, kind of a problem for those of us who are real estate lawyers. And so, and all the dates were blacked out, so we don't even know whether it's still in effect. And then, Cheryl also pointed out the fact that there was an error in the purchase price. The application says it's over 3 million, and the PNS says it's 2.5. And the application says there are no buildings on the site, and in fact, I believe that your site walk demonstrated that there were some.
There's a few.
Yeah. And I think with tenants. Yeah. And then, the pro forma didn't include anything about 40B monitoring fees, you know, or condo fees, or what they were planning on doing with all of that. So, that was sort of the basic kind of errors that I pointed out. And then, I went on to talk about the zoning, and I really wanted to point out to the select board, so that they could include it in their letter, the fact that a lot of effort went into the Ice House zoning project. There are some cases that have been upheld where towns have denied comprehensive permits, based on the fact in Middleborough, for example, where the project was proposed for an industrial zone, because 40B knocks out everything, and the town said, wait a minute, we zoned for affordable housing over here, and that's where we want it. We do not want it in the middle of an industrial park. And that denial was upheld. I had a case in Grafton years ago where the, the, we reduced the number of the units significantly, because the applicant insisted that we were gonna run water all the way up this hill and to serve the site on the top of a, of a hill. What that would have done was opened up this whole area for development, if you put in a water line, and we said that was not part of our plan. Our plan for this town was to preserve agricultural uses, and the town had in fact purchased conservation restrictions and had spent money to save family farms that were on the road. So, in that denial, that was upheld, because the town had a master plan, said this is what we want in this area, and, and had spent the money and had made the effort to make sure that that happened. So, my argument on this sort of zoning thing, and it could be totally beefed up if people have some comments to make, was that we wanted, and so did the neighbors, mixed use in this site. And 40B is hard to do mixed use. It's really tough. And so, we wanted to either have Mass Housing figure out a way to have a mixed use 40B. There are some, but they're rare. So, because that's what the neighbors wanted, some services, some, a coffee, you know, a coffee shop. I remember Bob Sheffield saying he was totally excited about walking across the street and getting some coffee. But, you know, there's some service, some services, some amenities for that part of town. And so, and we had taken those steps to do that. And so, I wanted to sort of point out the fact that this design features for that Parkway PUD, the idea that you were protecting the historic Parkway, you were protecting the conservation land, were all values that had been expressed by the zoning and should be therefore considered by Mass Housing. So, that, but that, as I said, that, that section could be beefed up if people wanted to. And that's just sort of the same idea with the design. I don't, the application, do we have that?
We're having some, so apparently we just learned that you can't have the screen hooked up and see it here at the same time.
Oh.
So, we're working on it.
Wow, wow.
Well, that makes it tough.
Can't see it. Oh, okay, so, so.
There it is. Okay.
So.
And Bill's magic.
In the application, there is sort of a drawing, I mean, a rendering of what they are proposing for the site, which Cheryl.
We'll go through this one first. This is the, this will talk about the.
That's some of the errors.
Size.
Oh, yeah. Well, there's mistakes in lot coverage.
Yeah.
Open space, and I pointed those out.
Yeah.
Is the size of the units.
Right.
So, a one-bedroom is 738, two-bedroom is 1,252, and a three-bedroom is 1,342.
Those are really.
Gives you the breakdown of the numbers, the, in the affordable, since there's 14 affordables, there'll be three ones, nine twos, two threes. There's 11, in the market rate, there's 11 one-bedrooms, 27 twos, and four three-bedrooms. When you file with the 40B, there has to be 10% of the units have to be three bedrooms or above. The price on those, on the market rates, actually, the prices on both.
The prices on all of it were crazy, I thought.
Frighteningly high.
Well, it was just, they were, they were kind of all over the place, and it was like, how could you even figure that out?
Okay. Well, seven.
There's the, what they're paying for it, is the numbers. So, these are the affordable, so a one-bedroom is 200,000, two-bedroom, 225, and a three-bedroom will be 250. The market rates for those, a one-bedroom is 375, two-bedroom is 500,000, and a three-bedroom would be 600,000. And then, we'll go to what you were talking about originally, and that's the images.
Well, we actually go to that open space piece, and I don't know, I think it's worth fighting that that's probably wrong. faking that that's probably wrong.
That they, that they what?
Yep.
That their lock coverage or open space, all of that was grossly wrong.
Oh, yeah.
Making it look much better than it is.
Page 10.
I can look up the email I sent to.
Page 10.
I have it.
I have a question, but I don't want to interrupt this conversation.
No, go ahead.
And I probably just got this wrong, and I didn't look in here afterwards, but I remember when we were there, somebody asked about curb cuts, they said there wouldn't be any additional, but when I was pulling out, the driveways were really small. I can't imagine it's going to stay like that, it would have to get bigger, right?
I would think, how do you get a fire, I mean.
It's tiny right now.
Yeah.
Their plan is to use.
Although it snowed on the ground though, so.
Their plan is to use the existing driveway that is the furthest one to the south, which would be the one closest to the rink.
So, this is why I say grossly inaccurate.
Yes, that's what I.
Buildings are taking up 7% of the site, and parking is 8%, and there's open space is 78%. How about reversing all those?
Yes.
Lock coverage 15%. These people made up numbers, they have no basis.
Really?
I wish the reality of their site plan.
No basis in fact.
Are you saying the driveway would stay the same then?
They what?
You saying the driveway would stay the same?
So.
The one in the north goes away, they close that one.
Understood.
The one in the south stays the same.
Really?
It might be a little bit wider, but it stays over there.
Okay, I would bet, yeah.
The other is, there are 99 total parking spaces, not 89. The parking ratio is supposed to be 1.65. Whoever did the approving, didn't do a good job.
Well, that's true. I mean, that's why we have rental and homeownership.
It says, yeah, you look at the plans for the building and there's a rental office.
Well, let's say it looks like a cut and paste job.
Or maybe somebody wasn't like at the site, they were just sitting at a desk somewhere filling it out.
I think they just chipped it out, and they just used the one they'd used 27 times before.
And I wouldn't call the elevation a rendering, because it's not a rendering, it has no basis in the, in fact, I looked at the design guidelines, and the design guidelines specifically require renderings and three dimensional views, which we don't have in this application.
So, Rich, that driveway were closed?
No, understood, it's, the other one's the same size though, that's why this, you're going to have to cut into the street.
They, they didn't, they're supposed to look at the development patterns of the area, putting a building whose dimensions they don't include, so we don't know how long the building is, but it's nearly the whole width of the site, 31 feet.
Yeah, so here's, so yeah, here's the plan, so, so, that's the existing building. So, we need the.
Where's the, are you looking for the rendering?
I'm looking for what, that's what's on there now.
Go to the site plan first, Bill, the proposed site plan, I think, would, that's what's the existing, yes. It also says in the application that they're supposed to include the boundaries of the property in their aerials, which they haven't done.
And this, yeah, so if you could.
Zoom back out.
78% views of all open spaces.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Right.
So, if this is Blue Hill Parkway over here.
Yep.
Pope's Pond is back here, and the dotted line is a FEMA floodplain line.
Right.
Which is why they're trying to keep everything out.
So, this, this, they don't tell us what size this is, but this property is 255 feet wide, so this is probably.
When I measure it, I get 185.
Yeah.
185 out of the 250. But that goes to the comment of setting the urban edge.
Yeah, so, so the, yeah, so the idea that this is meant to sort of reflect the local area was, was kind of interesting, and so, they.
They said the buildings have no historic significance, there's no significant history to the site.
Right, no archaeological.
Meanwhile, I believe the Historical Commission imposed a 24-month demo delay on the site, right? So, I think we could make a note of that too.
Okay. And the, they talk about the fact that the neighborhood has, has an urban edge, which I just thought would set everybody off the deep end. So, when, when everybody knows that near that site, there's, you know, ranches and bungalows and, you know, to one to two families, there's not a two, almost 200-foot-long building, you know, anywhere near there, or anywhere actually in Milton probably, except for 88 Wharf. So, so that was a concern, obviously, that we didn't think that they had complied with the guidelines at all, because they failed to take into account the pattern of the existing street frontage, the location on the Parkway. They're also closer, under the Ice House zoning, the setback off the Parkway was.
60 feet.
60 feet, and this is 30.
But they also took and compared themselves, they, they used two types of zoning, one was the cluster, which is not eligible for a cluster development, because it's only two acres. And the second was single family, and they didn't talk about single family at all.
Well, they also said it's an RV district, which doesn't exist, and they called it a residential business district, which doesn't exist. So, and it's the pre-existing non-conforming use from all along, as we know.
Sorry.
Do you want to show the picture of what the building's going to look like? Isn't that the next?
A little further down.
Yeah, there you go.
That's the street view, right?
Well, Mr. Sloan, who's in the audience, sent some photos today, Bill, did you get a chance to put those on your computer?
Of the other types of buildings that.
That this might actually turn out to look like. And Mr. Sloan, you got these from the consultant's website, is that right?
They're listed as examples of 40Bs that this consultant has permitted, so they're in the application as examples of his work.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, would you mind just coming up to the microphone and saying that, so people watching can hear that comment?
Looks like a home with sweets.
Maybe it is.
Be a lot longer than that though, right?
Yes.
185.
There's a, there's a few images, he's, he sent several.
That's a good picture though, yeah.
Okay, can you just repeat that?
Certainly, and Joe Sloan, 55 Concord Avenue, but I sent along those photographs, I thought they might be helpful to the conversation tonight, because if you, there aren't page numbers in this application, so it's a little bit difficult to reference certain points, as you pointed out. But, but in the section that's sort of the resume, if you will, of the consultant from Alloboro, there's a lengthy list of projects that he presented as examples of his work. Even though that list is lengthy, there are only just, I think, four properties on that list that were comprehensive permit projects, and these pictures are three of those four. There, there is no development in that list of four that, that unit-wise is comparable to what is proposed on the Parkway, but they're all height-wise, very similar, these, these three-story buildings.
Did you happen to find where these were located?
Sure, one's in Franklin, I think, I think they might be on that, I don't have.
Franklin Residence at the Groves, Middleborough.
Thanks.
And Willow Trace in Plainville.
Thank you.
Yeah, because it would be interesting to see, like, is your comment about, they said that this was walkable to city centers.
Yeah, I mean, that was the, you know, that's, we ran into that same situation.
Thank you, Joe.
With Randolph Ave, where they said that was a smart growth site, when really the only thing that you can get near there is, you know, jerky and stuff at the.
A vending machine, like you said, yes, I like that.
And again, kind of back to looking up a little bit in the record, there was a petition, change.org, I think it is, that residents have put together over 700 signatures, and looking for amenities, because amenities are not in this neighborhood.
Right.
And yet, this application says that's why it's a good site, because amenities are here. So, it's completely at odds with the hundreds of residents, you know, who, who commented on that when we did the zoning. So, I just, I think that's a good thing.
We should put that in the 700, yeah.
If you look at the diagram that's here, C is where the Parkway is, this would be the, the property line along the town's land at Pine Tree Brook, and Pope's Pond would be out here. So, the parking lot is in here, out here, and the out comes out and goes that way.
There is a site plan in there.
And under the building, right, is that?
It's, there are 50 spots under the building, there's 44.
Okay.
I think if you go back, there's one that shows.
There's a site plan in there, back the other way. One more.
While you're doing that, they mentioned on site that, that building backs up to as far as the other one currently is, is that accurate? Does it go further back?
They did not take and superimpose the, the old buildings, they are due to send us an image that, they're due to send Mass Housing an image that would superimpose the existing.
On top.
Under.
Okay, good.
Their new one.
Can you zoom just a little bit further out, Bill?
And when they send it to them, we'll see a copy?
Out.
There, that's fine, because now you can see all the property boundaries.
And so, all of, and of course, they're removing all of the trees and everything that's on the site, they're just bulldozing the whole thing.
Well, the guidelines are actually the application requirements, they are to, required to show the proposed grading, and as we know, the structure that sits here is up higher, and this is lower, and there's no accounting for that in this design. So, one assumes that they're just flattening it out, but it's hard to know what their real intention is. So, as far as, well, we talk about clearcutting our sites, I like.
Well, do we know how tall these, is that in there?
I think it's 35 feet, is it?
Oh, okay, so they are then, or else it'd be even higher.
Right.
I like the way in the design section you explain, you have the historic Parkway, and then you have the conservation land, and then you have this in between. And I was wondering if we talked to a landscape architect and just got a couple of details about why this is significant, and why this, you know, maybe, maybe hit on the sustainability principles or something, I mean, that, I know that that was something that they were interested in when, when it was Milton Muse, because we had the AC/EC, and we had a lot of things going for us, but you know, the, you know, the sustainable development principles, you have protect land and ecosystems. I, I remember one of the things, random thing, was the way Milton Muse was situated, there was no way for the snowplows to put snow without it going right into the water system and down.
Yeah, we had that same, we had that same situation with Randolph Ave, because that goes into wetlands.
Right, right.
That's what this would be.
But.
This would too.
Yeah, and so, on this one, I mean, when you think about, I mean, I've been doing a lot of speaking on lawyers' panels and stuff about climate change, and talking about zoning and climate change, there's a pond, I mean, there's a pond and a, and a, and a creek right there, and they're not saying anything about, you know, what their. Of course, that'd be before, that'd be before the Concom anyway, but, I mean, it's just, just kind of wanted to point out to Mass Housing, now that they've done a site visit too, is that there's no relationship at all to, to sort of showing any kinds of trails, any kinds of like amenities that we're adding.
Recreation, place for children to play.
What are we doing to tie into the surrounding neighborhood, the historic Parkway, and to the, and Pope's Pond right next to us?
One of the.
Walking paths, open space.
Yeah, 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 there's none of that.
No problem.
I mean, that's something that, because when we went through the process, we.
Right.
The, Milton Muse was approved.
Yeah.
But they, the, in the end, the recommendations, there were 16.
Yeah.
And it was because those 16 recommendations were going to be so costly for the 40B developer, that's what caused them to go away. But it was along the lines of those kind of things, like, if, if this developer had to actually physically remove the snow, but they, then that's a cost, and you get too many things like that, and they, they decide to walk away. But I don't know that we, that this, this is actually as easy to fight as Milton Muse.
Well, you were, that was right next to, and the other issue is they had an access issue, because it was a private road, so.
Yes, that's true too, yeah, there was a lot of issues.
Yeah.
But, but I, I saw some similarities with the wetlands, and with the historic nature of the road.
Mm-hmm.
And I was wondering, with the curb cuts, where they said they weren't going to cut into the median, they, they were going to have the curb cut in the same place as our prior approved PUD, but they weren't going to cut into the median, right? They were not going to modify the Parkway.
Yeah.
Right.
Right? I feel like we should mention that, because we want that to be in the final site applicability approval letter. But they stated that, and we want to hold them to it, we, you know what I mean?
Cut the sidewalk, you're saying?
Yeah.
Just before you go past it, one question I have is, you mentioned about the, the walking paths and the pond, how do, how will the state appreciate that? Because I would tell you, from the walkthrough, there was snow everywhere, you couldn't see anything.
Yeah.
You couldn't see a path, actually, it was just a white sheet.
Well, I don't know if there is one, but you know, if you were, if you were making this application, and you were trying to, as a developer, be like the best person in the planet, you would say, "Oh, and by the way."
Right.
"My project will enhance the access to Pope's Pond, and it will do.
Can we go back to the survey?
X, Y, and Z, and it will address, let's say that there's some, some sort of like the pollution problem, and we're going to take care of that by putting in X, Y, and Z." You would throw that into an application, because it makes you look like a hero.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't, you wouldn't leave that out.
And it makes your site more attractive.
Well, yeah, yeah.
But they're not.
But I think the point is that, you know, there's these people, and I just looked up who is permitting this project, and I don't want to make any references to that person, because I don't know them, but there are people that just make a living out of cutting and pasting these things and slapping them in. So, this is, you know, this is the reality. Luckily, we have Kathleen to help prepare us how to respond to it, but this is the world that we're in. So, I think in light of the prior conversation, we have to, we have to think of this in a.
Now, zoom back, yeah.
In the context of this, this proposal, which I think we all agree is inappropriate, but I also think we have to think about it as a board in the greater context of, if we do nothing on affordable housing, we can expect more and more and more of these in every single neighborhood.
We've got to learn everything we can from this one, because we have more coming.
But to your point, and your point about the site, I mean, this is that bridge, and this is the walking path that you can get to from the Parkway. So, all it would take is some permission from Conservation Commission to have a path, that, there is a, a path that goes through these trees, it's not that well established, because it's private property, but if that were, I mean, to get to it is a little bit, it's nothing like this, and these are still, they're not accessible to people who have challenges in walking, et cetera, but it's beautiful in there, and that access would be.
Well, this piece of parking that's right here, above the red line, is on town land.
Right.
So, there is the potential that they could have taken, gone to Concom, said, "Look, we're going to leave that there, we suggest leaving it there, and we'll take and put a pathway for you in to the bridge," or in to create in here.
Make it an accessible pathway that gives the people who have challenges, that can't do that, and have this amazing view down there, because that bridge, it's amazing.
There is, there's need to handicap, to make the bridge handicap accessible, there's a.
Big step.
Too large a step for, to make it currently handicap accessible. So, go to Conservation Commission, talk to them about doing some litigation work for them, with them.
So, Bill, has the Select Board heard back of whether the extension's been granted?
Yes.
Has been granted?
An additional 30 days.
Okay, so, given the hour and the items on our agenda still, can we put this on our agenda for our meeting on the 9th and continue? Everybody look at the letter and think about other things they might want to include in the letter?
When does the period expire? Let's see.
When does the?
Well, it's 27th to the 30th, so that would be 30 days, and they got another 30.
January 30?
The other 27th.
It's either the 27th or the 30th, we're not.
Yeah. So, we would have time at the next meeting, so I would suggest that you all have these drafts, so you could write on them, and then scan and email them back, or send comments or something like that, and I'll, you know.
Can you just restate though, where this part of the process is only looking at?
The site.
The site eligibility.
That's it.
And if you, if, but if you look at this, there are several pages in here which talk about this phase.
Okay, good.
And they do refer to the design guidelines, which they have a link to, and, and so, and that too, has a section that says. And, and so, and that too, has a section that says, this applies to this phase, so you can, and the things that I focused, that I mentioned, were both drawn from that phase, not from the later phase. So there, it's more than you might think in terms of what they're required to submit, and what the design features that they should be looking at in terms of the surrounding development patterns.
I mean, what, we also need to make sure that we give enough time to the Select Board to sort of incorporate our letter into theirs. So really, on the ninth, we should just be saying, okay, fine, we're ready to sign it, okay?
Yeah, and organizations can also get letters into the, um, to the Select Board, like as an appendix kind of thing, so that, you know, public letters, like when it was Milton Muse, we had friends of Blue Hills, and, you know, organizations that are close to this.
Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think if.
But that's really the Select Board, that's not us organizing that?
That's right, that's right.
That's the Select Board, and, and people watching this tonight would know that their organizations, um, who, you know, might be impacted by this, would want to submit something to the Select Board.
But even individuals, if they've been following, and they read our letter when it's done, and they support the letter, they can always send something to the Select Board saying that they support the comments that are contained in the Planning Board's letter, instead of having to regurgitate.
Yeah.
They can also take and make comment directly to mass housing.
I think it's important to state, um, that, you know, that the P U D did not receive a special permit, as Kathleen noted in her letter.
Right.
Um, and a special permit did not expire on this property.
Right.
Because it was also in the Milton Times on page 10. Clark said that the current owner of the property, Patrick McKean, or whatever, blah, 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 received a special permit to build a mix of 25 residential units, blah, 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 blah. The project never went forward, and the special permit has expired. We just need to clear that up, maybe a retractation.
Elaine, can we get that cleared up?
Well, because I thought, yeah, I thought in the application, when the, when the develop, when they filled that out, it was like, oh, well, there was a special permit, and the Planning Board didn't extend it.
Right, that's the way it sounded.
And it was like, so it, so it was sort of like, we already have kind of a political problem with, you know, mass housing, and so it was like, it made us, it made us look like.
We weren't doing anything.
We were being structured.
I, I pointed this out on the site wash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The zoning, and the fact that there was no special permit, and that there is mixed use zoning, that there was a lot of effort, town meeting passed it, a lot of community input, and that zoning exists for that site, and it reflects what people want to see on that site.
And it's new.
He agreed with you, he agreed with you, and said that they should be putting that in there.
Yeah, he agreed that that should definitely be factored in.
Yes. So this is just a question, because I don't know. I wanted this from Milton Muse, but I didn't get it. But I think it's worth asking, especially with our fire stations, you know, all of them at a tipping point. Now, the fire stations would have to respond to, let's say, 54 units, it could be hundreds of people.
There are two Supreme Judicial Court cases.
That's why.
That address the fire safety, and it was some town way out west, and was going to have to buy a ladder truck, because the buildings were taller than anything they've ever had in town. And that is not a reason to deny the permit.
Well, I'm not asking for denial, I'm asking for the state or the developer to pitch in and help the local fire station.
They, they put that into the condition.
And did they get a?
Did it work?
No.
No, they got nothing.
Did not.
Okay. Well, it was worth a try. You've got to ask.
So, I just want to say, thank Kathleen for her efforts. I think the, what you had circulated, I thought was awesome, but I think based on this discussion.
Yeah, so we'll add some stuff, yeah.
We can even add more, some more stuff. I think we should be in good shape by the ninth.
I, I think we should work with a landscape architect on just getting some language, just to beef up the design section, just a sentence or two. I'll try to come up with something.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be great, okay.
Should we put our draft letter online, so that interested parties can come on the ninth?
Yes, definitely.
Because like, the audience doesn't have any idea what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So they don't have any way to see what our letter is.
I think they're going to be really happy to see that, you know, you caught everything. I mean.
They didn't catch anything.
Well, you caught a lot of things, but maybe they'll. But when they understand, when they understand the kind of things that you're catching.
All right. As long as it's draft form, as long as we know it's draft form.
Draft, draft, draft.
Okay.
For discussion only, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I just feel like it would make residents in the area feel more confident about how this process.
Unfortunately, my name's not on it anywhere.
There you go.
And note that it's, yeah, it's just, it truly is a draft, because there's things that can be added, yeah.
I just think people would feel good about it.
Okay. I do, that's why I think.
Okay.
For, for a lot of reasons, but that being one of them.
All right, so we'll continue this discussion at our meeting on January 9th.
Right.
Um, I'm going to move the Housing Committee Housing Production Plan update to, um, right before the Milton Village overlay discussion, and move, uh, at the moment to the informational presentation and discussion related to 98 Adams Street, and ask Mr. Roberts and Mr. Chung to come forward, please. Welcome, gentlemen.
Hello.
Again, you have to introduce yourselves and your address for the record.
My name is Michael Roberts. I live at 100 Adams Street. I have been a resident of Milton since the mid 80s. I've been active on the Technology Committee for about 10 years, helped upgrade technology in Town Hall, that sort of stuff. Coached Little League, raised my children here, all the, all that good stuff. I'm also the owner of 98 Adams Street, uh, which is also known as the Swift Hat Shop, um, which I bought at an auction, uh, many years ago with the intent of making it my office. My children were little at the time. I, my intent was to rehab it, make it my office, so my kids could walk from my, uh, from school, come visit their dad at, um, at work. Didn't work out that way. There, they range in age from 34 to 40. We, uh, we haven't been able to get that office that I had intended to have there. I'm also, uh, the, the developer of 36 Central Avenue, um, which was something that I did at about the same time I acquired these two properties. I'm kind of, I, I call myself the accidental developer, because I, I hadn't intended to do this, but, um, there, there were situations that in my personal life and in my interests, kind of caught me. And one was this idea of rejuvenating undervalued land, uh, in towns by changing zoning. When I first bought these buildings, including the parking lot at 36 Central Avenue, uh, I, I didn't realize at the time that in order to make something economically feasible, you need to have something that the market wants, not that the land says you can do so. 36 Central, for instance, was commercially zoned when I bought it. Um, I was an active participant in, uh, helping get the overlay passed, um, that allowed Central Village to be, um, really rebuilt. I think at the time we started that, there had been no new investment in Central 60 years, that was 20 years ago. Uh, pretty much the place had just sat there, and it was really a function of zoning. What, uh, the way it was zoned, um, didn't make it feasible for anybody in the way the world had changed, to be able to do anything. Uh, a lot of people don't know this, 36 Central Avenue I, there's some characteristics about 36 Central that are important. Uh, it actually won the, um, mass, uh, Boston Builders Association Best Mixed Use Project in 2012. That was kind of cool, little project in Milton, uh, got these sorts of laurels. And I, I think it's, um, whether you like the architecture, like, you like the density, what it did was it, um, uh, essentially established that something was going to happen in Central that was worthy of bringing in other investors. Um, and it was interesting, I had a conversation after 36 Central was built with the owner of Steel and Rye, and I said, I can't believe you put this kind of money in this garage. Uh, I said, what made you do it? And he, he said, I think he was the manager of the country club at the time, and he said, I did it because I saw what you had done down at 36 Central Avenue, and I said, this is a place that people are going to want to live in. And, uh, and that's where the investment came from. Since that time, uh, I, of course, I've been, I've come up with four or five different plans for the Swift Hat Shop, that for a variety of reasons, um, never made it, uh, to the point where we could put a shovel in the ground. But I did take a detour down to Cohasset, and I worked on an overlay in Cohasset, which, in Cohasset, on the train tracks, in Cohasset Village, there was a parcel of land, which was the last commercial, um, probably, it was on the wrong side of the tracks, it wasn't on the village side of the tracks, it was on the other side, on the residential side of the tracks.
Yeah, right.
And essentially, uh, all it had on it was a little shed, that was an ice cream shop, and there was also a ranch on the land, and it was all overgrown, and it was a mess. And they passed an overlay down there that allowed you to, um, under certain circumstances, if you had a commercial use, you could build it back to the commercial use. Well, the developers, because of the cost of permitting, even after the overlay was passed in 2012, uh, two developers went bankrupt trying to get that site developed. Uh, one wanted a big building like the one you're looking at right now, a garden-style building, the residents went crazy. We came in with a plan, uh, that, uh, essentially, uh, built townhouses down there. The, uh, project, it was, it was a complex project, but it's, uh, sold out. Now there are people living in there and, uh, being able to walk downtown. Um, and the amazing thing about that project was that we had always said to people that if we build a successful project here, in order to make it successful, we need to raise the value of the area, and you'll get the benefits of the value. Not only will you have an overgrown, uh, parcel of land that nobody takes care of, but you'll actually have a, um, a building that raises values. It, it turns out, our banking was done with what was Pilgrim Bank at the time, which is the local bank. The, the loan officer we dealt with on the project told me that that project increased values by 50% within about a half a mile radius of the project. Just because, uh, you basically had an eyesore that the next door neighbor, who was a lady who had opposed the project, uh, by the end, my son worked with me on that project, he grew up and he got to work with me on the project. Uh, she came up to him, and she gave him a big hug one day, and he, he said, why are you giving me a hug? And she said, uh, I just refinanced my house, I haven't been able to get any money to rehab my house in 25 years since I bought it, and the, the appraisal on my house went up by 50%, and now I can fix it up. And if you go up, um, Pleasant Street in Cohasset, and you look at all the building that's going on after that project went in. So needless to say, I say that to everybody, because I think, uh, the, the other thing that we did in both is if you looked at the buyers, the buyers were empty nesters in towns that had big houses and no housing stock for people who were retiring. And in both of these cases, the buyers of the units, by and large, did not bring, uh, they weren't, were not families, they were people who sold their homes to families, and then moved into these, which, so they weren't a burden on the school system and that sort of thing. So I'm here because I've been following, uh, I'm here because I still own 98 Adams Street, and I live in the building next to it. I have, uh, been trying to, uh, improve my circumstance for many, many years, and I've been unable to because of the complexity of the site and the complexity of the zoning in the area, and the other complexities of the site, not the least of which is the Swift Hat Shop, which is a building that people like a lot. So I, um, as I've been following the zoning, I, I, I think, uh, I support the zoning, we just say that. I live there, I support the zoning, and I, I think zoning is going to clarify things in a way that needs to be clarified in order to be able to attract investment to the area. And I think that the, the, uh, proposal gives, uh, the, the Planning Board enough power to make sure that bad things don't get developed. That's one of the good things about an overlay. If you choose to go under the overlay, the developer is at the mercy of, to a certain extent, of the Planning Board, which means that the public is protected more than they would be if you just developed under the, uh, the underlying zoning, which is by right. The reason I'm here tonight is, uh, there's an adjustment in the zoning that we would like to propose, that would make, um, a, a plan that's currently in the concept stage feasible. And it might not be feasible under the, the, the way the zoning is, um, as it exists. We think our site, and, and because of the unique conditions, the Swift Hat Shop, the need to build parking underneath, because we got a pretty small lot, um, it's going to require, uh, uh, at least, um, a half a story beyond what the current zoning maxes out. So the current zoning is four stories, and, um, so we're, we're here to make the case that the Planning Board, uh, should amend the zoning to allow, under certain circumstances, um, another floor, uh, especially when in unique sites like 98 Adams. So we're going to explain tonight, uh, I've hired Stephen Chung. Uh, Stephen Chung is an architect from Boston, he's also a winner, he's award-winning, he won the Howes Award, which is a voter, a design award with Howes.com.
Bless you.
And, uh, he, he happens to love the site. I, I've brought many architects by the site, and I, I'm a believer that somebody has to love something in order to do things that are beautiful, and, and, uh, he, he loves the site, and he loves the idea of restoring the Swift Hat Shop. So with, with that said, um, he will talk about it in more detail. The, the primary thing that happens under your zoning is if you have four floors, there's a, there's two things that happen to a developer when you get to four floors. One is you need another stair core. So a stair core, because the, under the, the thing, you get another stair core. The, that affects your saleable square footage, because it not only goes down from the floor, you, you need the extra staircase in, it goes all the way through all the existing floors. That wouldn't be bad if you had a 10,000 square foot footprint, but if you've got a tiny footprint like, uh, like, um, we have at, uh, 98 to, uh, 102 Adams Street, that in order to go to the fourth floor, uh, you lose so much square footage that it doesn't work, it doesn't work for you. The second thing is the zoning allows you to have a stair, uh, a stair riser, a stair head at the top of the building. So on top of the roof, uh, you've got these other structures, so you can walk up to the roof to get there. I, I don't know if any of you have ever seen those structures, but they're very, very ugly. They're terrible looking, they destroyed. We'd like to see the zoning amended that would allow the, a developer to make use of, in order to hide the stair stack, um, to be able to build, uh, saleable square footage on the fifth floor. Um, it, you wouldn't necessarily need a whole fifth floor, but you would, you could build around those stacks, you could build, in our case, we'll talk about a little bit more, there are internal staircases in the two top floor units that would be able to access that space. And by doing, and Stephen's going to show you what that looks like, what it looks like without it, and what it looks like with it. But I think aesthetically, it makes for a much, um, more beautiful building without these things sticking on at the top. It helps me. But the last thing I'll go is the economics of 98 to, um, 102 Adams Street. In, in order to do anything there, you, you really need to figure out, uh, something for uh, 98, uh, Adams Street Swift Hat Shop. People just want it, and, uh, you know, people say to me all the time, why don't you just bulldoze it over? I, I've had two demolition permits for it. Uh, I have not taken it down, because I, uh, you're my neighbors, I respect my neighbors, and, um, and I, I do think this is something we have to work together on. The other thing is, uh, parking is, uh, important. In our particular plan, you get to a four-story building, you've got to get par, you've got to find parking someplace. The only place to find parking on that side is to go underneath the building very, very costly. So your parking, you have the mitigation of the, um, the Swift Hat Shop, and, uh, the final thing you have, which was raised at the Master Plan Committee, which is the potential for affordable. And when you throw those three things in there, in a tiny footprint that has two cores, uh, you really, it doesn't work. So Stephen's here, I gave this problem to Stephen to, uh, come up with a building that would take care of this, and that was aesthetically pleasing, and I let him do his presentation. and that was aesthetically pleasing, and I let him do his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Stephen. And thank you, Mike, for that background. I'm going to ask you to try and do this in like 15 minutes, okay?
How come everybody gets to talk so long and I have to do it so fast? All right, I'm going to show lots of pictures.
I know. I just said try, but, you know, because I want to make sure that we get through some zoning discussion when you're done, okay?
Yep.
All right, I'm going to just turn the light so we can see about it.
I will say that I'm nervous after hearing that last presentation and the critique of it, so.
No, but your architecture, I don't think it's going to look like that architecture, so let's see it.
So Mike got into details, and I just want to first just talk about the idea of trying to do some, a residential building in this location with some commercial. That's like the big concept, and that's what I got excited about. It's a postage-sized, postage-stamped-sized lot, it's tiny, there's a topography that's kind of complicated, there's an historic building on the site, there's a potential view of the water. So it's like, there are lots of really exciting things I thought about it, but it's also, I knew right away it's very challenging because of the things that Mike had mentioned. The small footprint is just, it's terrible for multiple, for multi-unit residential buildings, it's just very challenging. Elevator, two cores, you don't, you lose a lot of space. So this is, this is a challenge. It doesn't mean it's not doable, it just said it's going to be a challenge. So before I talk about this, I just want to, just very briefly, just give you some examples of things that I've done in the past that maybe not, I mean, it's a very unique situation, but let's just, can you go ahead to the first project? Go back. So this is in the south end, this is a former police station. This is a city-owned property, we've done many of these projects with, working in partnership with towns. So that building, a developer proposed to acquire that building, and we proposed to renovate, convert that into 26 residences. Part of the project was a preservation, restoration, which you see on the bottom right, which is renovating and restoring the house, the building to its former glory. This was a police station, had to have a new use, so obviously the interiors would change quite dramatically. Go to the next slide. The back is really different because the building actually, while on the front, it looks quite symmetrical and it's even on all sides, the back sort of drops down, has this kind of strange profile. That's brick, the kind of beige on the bottom, and then the glass on the side, that's sort of dropped in, that's our addition. And so the diagrams, which you're looking at at the top, the ones without any color on them, that's what's existing, and then with the black, that's kind of what we proposed. So it's an L-shaped proposal. In effect, what's happened is we're enclosing that back wall, and then by doing that, we then create four sides, and then we put a roof, so we put a skylight on top. And on the right, this is part of, there's a very, you know, this is south end, so the historic district is, was all over this project, this is a very high-profile, profile project. And really, the approach was to find something which is compatible historically, but not repeating or copying. And this is a, I don't want to get into the design of this project, but I just wanted to show you kind of some of the challenging projects that we've done in the past. So next. And so that's what it looks like on Gray Street in the south end, that's kind of when it's finished. And then you see the skylight, we created this new outdoor, indoor courtyard space, which used to be outdoor. You get a sense of kind of their units inside that building. So that was 2007, a long time ago. Okay, next. This is a former police station also, by coincidence, in Somerville. There was a two-story building, there was a fire on the penthouse, then the police station moved. They said, "What should we do with this building?" We said that we would like to propose 14 residences. And in this particular case, there was some old photos of the penthouse, and, I mean, I'm not a traditionalist, but in this case, we really felt like the best case was to try to reproduce as best we could what was there previously. The interior is very modern, but that's what we did, so next. That's completed to the left, and I just wanted you to point, point to the ivy. I mean, that's something we proposed, that's something that we thought was, would be becoming, and something that I also wanted you to remember when I show you what we're talking about for 98 Adams Street. Next. And this is current, this is in Dorchester. There's an existing site on the upper left, there's nothing there. That house, that's, you see the demolition photos, that was a very distinguished house, but in the '70s, they, it was in disrepair. This is sort of a mixed area, let's say, and it really became into great disrepair, and that's the only photos that the city, actually, the archivists in the Boston City Library had. Based off of that, they said, "Can you do something?" And I said, "That's all, that's all they gave me." So we didn't want to reproduce, and we couldn't reproduce what was there. Instead, we said, "Why don't we try to maybe remember or have some memory of what was there, but not try to reproduce it?" And we proposing, we're proposing 12 units to the building on the upper right. So we're in process, that's a sort of concept design. Okay, so next. So these are some of the, I mean, many of these projects, I mean, maybe it's Boston, but there seems like we can't escape, not that it's bad, but history, and there's old buildings and old sites, and often we're presented with these scenarios, which I find really interesting. And this one with the head, the Swift Hat Shop, I thought that was fascinating, that there was a little building there, it was part of the, part of the project potentially, and I said, "Well, I'd love to keep that, if we could keep it." And so when Mike presented this project to me, I didn't know about everything else, he just said, "What would you do here?" And so that's kind of how I approached it. And now again, this is informational, we're thinking aloud, and we wanted to get feedback. This is not our proposal, this is not, this is not a finished design. This is kind of what we went through as we're sort of thinking through what we could do here. So next. So the lot is 4,000 square feet approximately, it's tiny, it's a very small little lot. It's got Mike's house to the right, existing house, it's a white collaborative house. There's a Swift Hat Shop, the Hat Shop, which is in disrepair, it's the little red building. Behind, there's a little garage that's sort of down the hill. The little lines that are on the map, that's topography, that's just showing one-foot intervals of how this, how steep the site is really. And this is what's allowing us to potentially use a lower level or half-level for parking. Okay, so next. And just a couple images, just so you get a sense of kind of present day, I mean, this is just, this is just before it snowed. I mean, this is the Verizon Building to the right, which is quite large and deep. Mike's house is the house, the White House, and then looking down the hill, you can get a sense of the slope, just, I mean, you've been there, but just so you remember, the Swift Hat Shop there. And then just sort of, kind of go around the corner, there is a shared driveway, maybe it's the driveway that belongs to the heating and plumbing store just down below, but that's the driveway that Mike uses to get it to park at the White House, and I guess the white car is also your car there. Anyway, so that's, that's kind of current condition. As you can see, the house is not in, is not in great shape. But you can really see that the, how the base, that lower level, how we thought, okay, that could be great for parking, right? We can, we can get parking into this, into this project, which I thought was really critical, and one of the first things I asked about him is that unless we get parking, I bet we can't make this project work. Okay, so next. I sort of flew my drone around here, just to get a very sense of the, of the lay of the land. I hope that's allowed, I'm sorry, it's too late, outdated. So I just flew around there and tried to get a sense, go back one, just on Bill. And again, you can see the Verizon, I think it was important, just to sort of show the mass of that building, and this little, small lot is really, I mean, it's quite small in comparison to what's there, but, and then just, it's nice to be able to see the connection to the water potential, which exists, which we know is there, but just not, it's hard to see with that, with all this sort of heavy trees. But anyway, it's a great, exciting situation. Next.
If it's fully occupied.
And so I did a little research here, and I had learned that maybe that there was a lot of different ideas about this. At one moment, there was a marijuana shop, and on, and on, and on, and I just thought it would be great if somehow that could be incorporated into this development and become part of this concept, which Mike, now, we talked about kind of a living room for this little residential development. And we're proposing nine units, and just the idea that these, but these rent, the residents, and by the way, this is condo, this would be, people would buy these units, this is not rental, it's not transient, this is ideally, I think, empty nesters that would live here. Like Mike, they, they sort of, the kids are grown up, and they want to now relocate to the city and have a different kind of life. Maybe the units are a little bit smaller than their big house in the suburb, but the idea that they can walk and have coffee and maybe get to know their neighbors better. A lot of residential buildings, the lobby is really just a transient space, that's not a place where people can really meet, and we thought that we'll, we can make this little red building, that lobby, and in fact, a commercial use, we're proposing a bakery. So a little bakery, coffee shop, it's not a Starbucks kind of thing, it's a bit more, I don't know, it's more like a very informal, I think Mike has been talks with somebody that thinks it's a great little idea to have this little charming little commercial space for residents, but for everybody. I mean, I think it would be, again, very different than Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks, it'd be a, it's not a chain, it's just a, you know, a little ma pa bakery that residents and everyone could, could use. So that's kind of our thought, what that could be. Next. And so this is a concept site plan. The pink on the corner is the reconstructed, recreated red house. The gray to the back, which is sort of an L-shaped, L-shaped configuration, those are the, that's the residential building or block that we have sort of around the pink building. And the driveway is the shared driveway, I'm just showing a car, how it kind of goes down the ramp and would go underneath the building. So what we're really looking at here is the ground floor of this development. Okay, next. Just really quickly, but the idea is that on the ground floor, or the sort of basement level, you drive in, there's open-air parking, there's nine spaces, that seems to work okay. And then on the ground floor, if we go to the middle plan, you can see the doors to the right, that's the entrance right there, that's the entrance to the building, there's a little lobby there. One can go down or to the left, and that's the Swift Hat Shop, and that would be the bakery. I think I need to carve a little bit of space, I'm showing into the new building, that little, that little tail to the building, that's a maybe kitchen, no, no, sorry, in the pink?
The red, yeah.
Down there, the pink. I think I need to carve a little bit of space for kitchen and so forth, to make this, to make that commercial space work. And the idea is, by the way, it's two levels, it's very tight, and we think we would just make it one tall space, so it's like a floor and a half. So it would be, it would be, it would be charming, but it would be more comfortable than it is now, even if we recreated it. So it would be a one-and-a-half-story space. And then the units are loft-style, they're oriented towards the back and also towards the park, to the...
Suburban Reservoir Park.
Yeah, yeah. And then as you go up, so there's three on the ground floor, on the second floor, there's two. The pink, you see it, or see that little line through it, that just means that it's just the roof of it. Go up one more story. Sorry, next plan. And then as we get up higher, what happens is that, you can see the building on the right, that's the third plan, the building sort of steps back to allow the bakery to have its own, the red house to have its own space, and so the building is, well, it's taller, it's set back. And then really, the, again, as I said, mentioned, these are sort of loft-style, they're oriented towards the, towards the park and the water, and they begin to sort of carve away as they get higher. So there's terraces, balconies, which does two things. One, obviously, it's nice for the residents to begin to have outdoor space, but secondly, for the, you know, for the people who live there, the building begins to have less mass, it looks, it looks less impactful, it's not a big block, the same sort of floor as you go up. And the fourth and fifth floor, this is what Mike was talking about, the fifth, you know, the fifth floor, the challenge, I thought that the best way to handle this would be to have duplexes, so there's two duplexes. And so what happens is now the elevator penthouse, which we need, it actually terminates in that floor, in the fifth floor, so it doesn't stick out past the building, it's kind of buried in the fifth floor. One of the stairs goes up, but again, it's kind of buried in the, in the, in the fifth floor. So you kind of lose those things which extend up past, which definitely is a, is a, is very positive. I wouldn't say it's the main reason why we did it, but I think that's, it's a very positive possible reason for, it's just a great sort of platonic, let's say, of this, of this approach. And then on the top floor, this is the second floor of the duplex, and maybe Mike wants to live here, and this is what his idea is, that, is that really it's the master bedroom or the bedroom area, and then now, again, the building is really cut away from the perimeter. So now, the top floor is actually half the square footage as the ground floor, so it's 1,800 square feet, 1,900 square feet, less, you know, 4,000 or 3900. So the idea is that that top floor, the penthouse, which is set aside, is set back on three sides, is actually half the size of the, of the, of the other floor. So from the street, you really shouldn't be able to see it too much, although my perspective doesn't really show you that, because I'm trying to show you the building, but I'll show you what, what that might look like. Next. Okay, building context, so go ahead, one more. Oh, so, and in part of the study, again, not really, just, just going here very fresh, I mean, I, I live in Wayland, I, I've been to Milton, but I don't really know it as well as you guys know it. And I sort of looked at it with fresh eyes and really excited about the context and some of the beautiful mill buildings and sort of the material palette, the repetitive windows and slate, and just, there's a lot of character here. I don't, I, my impulse was not to try to reproduce something historical, but just that there is a context to look at and be inspired by, so that's kind of the first thought. Okay, next. And so here's, here's the mass of the building. Again, I know you're going to want to evaluate the design, but let's just look at it as a block for a second, and just say, we're trying to ask you to think of this as a mixed, a mixed-use project in this lot, and, you know, whether that seems sort of palatable. But, so, upper left, you can see that's the Verizon Building to the right, and you've got a sense of the, sort of L-shaped building, which has got the red house, yeah, kind of nestled to the lower left, and the idea being that you would see two sides of that building, the space between the new and the old would be that kind of lobby space for the, the entry for both. Finger can go right towards the in-between there. And then, and then the red house would then look towards the park and also down the, down the village. That would be something more prominent than I would say that the building, the sort of brick building would be, the new building, just because one walks by it and passed it, and I think that would still have its sort of significance, but it would be, of course, rebuilt and look like it once did, or probably maybe better now, I think. Okay, next. We're just, next images, and you can sort of see, no, no, go back, sorry. And then just, just different views, aerial views of the, of the massing in context, again, just doing it for you guys, just so you could sort of see what that looks like. I think, oh, sorry, you know, Bill, can you go back one slide? What I wanted to, one slide, yeah. One more slide. Okay, so when I was looking at the context, I was trying to sort of feel and see if there was something, you know, was it typically four stories, is there a certain, is mat, it's not really like that. The street, the, the street in this area, I mean, the sizes of the buildings, the heights, it goes up and down, up and down, there wasn't like a, a sort of dominant or predominant texture or scale that I could sort of say, "Oh, everything is definitely four stories here, I need to sort of work with that." I really felt like there's sort of quite a bit of up and down. And so I didn't, so I felt, you know, and again, our site is so different than a lot of the sites that are there, so I was trying to look at, look and see if there was something that I felt like we should respond to, and I actually did not feel like there was something really super strong to sort of think about. Also, our site is, the butter, our only butter is, is, is the Verizon Building, and then there's a park, and then there's parking behind us.
And the plumber.
And the plumber, which is sort of buried into the ground, a little concrete block building. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Bill. And then this is, you know, the, we met with the, we had a meeting last week, and we just talked about some visuals that would help kind of explain what we're proposing in context and sort of show the height of the building. I know that Mike had mentioned five stories, and everyone gets scared, and, you know, let's call it four-and-a-half stories, but really, in context with Verizon Building, which you would say is two stories, but, I mean, as you can see, the four stories actually lines up with their two stories, it's just, it's a much bigger building. This would be ten-and-a-half foot floor-to-floor, which are nine-foot ceilings, and it's really within our four stories, it sort of matches the cornice of their two stories, and then their roof kind of extends pretty high, and our half-story is actually below that. So yes, while taller than maybe the zoning is proposing, it's actually, I think, next to that building seems quite reasonable. And the other side is just, that's the, Charlie did that for you, that's the, that's the other side of the street, it's just sort of up and down, up and down. I don't really know it shows so much, but I just, I just gave it to you. Okay, next. And just a little closer, so you can see the Swift Hat Shop there, and you can see the entrance in between the two buildings, that's sort of, imagine brick with the kind of limestone base with glass in between, and then another sort of brick, so the building is sort of broken up. It is an L-shaped building, but it's, it's not a block. I think that's the concept, and I can sort of see the rhythm of some of the things that are going on next door, and also down the way, but again, not a design, I think this is really just some parameters and things we're kind of working with and playing with. Next. And again, I, I'm, I'm standing back, and I'm doing this only so you guys can see everything, and I don't think this is really a view, but I just want to show you kind of what that restored or recreated bakery could look like, the sort of porch which we created extended to create an entrance, a base of some sort that would be active, and then the residences up above, I mean, loft-style. I think that the building, that's sort of the element which is protruding out, we would have ivy on the building, just the way I showed you, that we did in Somerville, so we try to let the greenery, and we would work with that to try to sort of bring that to the building. So while we think it's contemporary, we think brick and masonry, and then the top floor would be recessed in glass, in translucent glass, as you saw for the police station and the loft I showed you, and we worked with this, so I think with some work in design work and some back and forth with you guys, we can work on that to sort of get it to where it needs to be. But for most of the perspectives on the computer, that's not, that's not a view you see, so I'm only doing this again just so you can really be honest and sort of say, if I'm back here and like looking up like that, this is kind of all the elements, but if we were to do sort of step-by-step episodic, it's really not, it's not that. But anyway, I did it because we're just trying to show you everything. So next slide. Okay, so just very quickly, just the last thing, just to show you. So this is 14,000 square feet, this is four, four-and-a-half stories, called five stories, with a half-level up above, nine units, nine parking. And so that's kind of what, to me, is ideal. Next. Or we say we don't get that fifth floor, and I said, "What would it look like?" I said, "Then I think the building then has to be a block. We really can't keep that little red building because you need the square footage to come forward and just take that, build a block, and then those two sort of elements which are sticking up, yes, those are the elevator penthouse and stair, the stair headhouse." So if you look at, if you go back one slide and sort of look back and forth, I mean, you So if you look at, if you go back one slide and sort of look back and forth, I mean, you just have to sort of say, I mean, me as architect, I just prefer this, because I think it has some character. I think the building is going to go in and out, and of course, you can keep the red building. Or if I'm sort of very brutal and say that, okay, we just have to sort of maximize it and make it work, then it's the second one. So hopefully, that's not what people like, but I, I think that the first one, this one is much nicer, I hope. Next. And just the end, so, I mean, you, I don't want to go through all these, but basically, this is the pros and cons of these two. And, you know, I did this for myself, but really just, I mean, I, I'm, obviously, I'm sort of pointing towards the left one, because you can preserve the old building, you can stuff the building back from the street, there's terraces on three sides. Penthouse is set back on the top floor on three sides, it can be glass. Top two floors duplex units, as a result, no elevator headhouse, no stair headhouse. And then on the right, I do need the full lot area for four-story building to make it 14,000 square feet. Historic building, it just doesn't fit in that program, I think. Maybe there's a bakery on the ground floor, but I, I just don't think you can keep that building and set it, set the new building back. Just can't give up that square footage. And then, I mean, I, instead of all the terraces and carving away at the building, probably would be something more like a roof deck or something on top, as opposed to sort of carving mass away from it. So, for many reasons, just architecturally, I think that the first one is sort of more desirable for me. And, again, that, I know that sort of runs contrary to what your zoning allows for. But that's why we're sort of asking, maybe, this is unique, historic building, a, a tiny little lot. Maybe this could be extenuating circumstance, or at least be something you would consider. Next. And that's it. That's sort of the ending slide.
All right, thank you. You were close to your 15 minutes, but.
Talk fast.
Thank you for attempting that and going through it. Okay. So, I guess, you know, it's a lot for people to sort of get their heads around and wrap their heads around. But I thought it would be interesting for them to come. Mr. Roberts reached out to me about a month ago and said he had an idea that he wanted to start to show folks in town. So I had a meeting with Bill Ellison and me and Stephen. And then I suggested that they take it to the MPIC and to planning board, just get some feedback, think about. I mean, this is, the zoning is obviously not in place. The sort of zoning was developed with thinking that it would be nice that this site could take advantage of it. So I think it's kind of interesting to see, you know, someone's taking a look at what they could do with the property and finding that the zoning, in some ways, could, if tweaked, it could work for this site. So, I think at this point, unless, if you, anybody have questions for Mr. Roberts or Mr. Chung? So I think.
Any feedback? They're just like, oh.
I think, sure, I mean, if, if people are ready to kind of digest a little bit what they saw, you ready for any comments or feedback?
Why everybody's looking at me?
Start on this side. Start in the audience. Sure, Steve, can you come forward, just so you can be on the mic, please?
I just have a question about the structural integrity of the little house. Whether, how it's going to withstand the new construction.
This will be a recreation.
And then, I know Meredith, I corresponded with Steve O'Donnell, Chair of your Historical Commission, and he said he couldn't be here tonight, but that he was encouraging some members to come. So hopefully, you folks can take this up at some point also and, and give some thought to it. But he did send an email to us saying that it was very, and maybe if you want to amplify anything, but that the commission was very keen on seeing the building either preserved or rebuilt on-site in this location, that they do deem it to have historic value. And so hopefully, you know, you can give that some thought. One thing, the MPIC did have a discussion last week and, and voted to send sentiments or thoughts to this board that they generally were supportive of this, because it preserves the swift hat house building, which a lot of folks in town have really been trying to figure out ways to make happen. And part of what is required to make that work is some adjustment in, in what they can do with the building. So I think Stephen went through that. You, you can kind of take a bigger footprint and go four stories and be within the strict limits of the zoning. Or if you save the swift hat and you, and you do that half story up top, and you're absorbing the stair and the elevator within that half story, that, that gives them the comparable square footage, but it also saves the swift hat. So, yes.
So, I mean, I can't, I was, I should apologize. It wasn't clear what we were even talking about until halfway through your presentation. I didn't know if you were proposing a project or offering, but, I don't know. But anyways, I, I think that what you have put before us is very interesting. I think the idea of recreating the swift hat is interesting and true to the character of the district. I do think that some sort of redevelopment of that whole little section would be great. Whether this is the building or not the building, I don't know. But I think it's an interesting concept. So, I mean, it is helpful to see. So this would be allowed under our zoning with the historic.
Not that partial, not that partial fifth floor.
Not with the incentive bonus through the historic.
No, no, because it stops at four. So one of the things that.
Three, and then two at the bonus.
So I do think that the jetting out elevator and stairwell is very hideous. So I think this is preferable from a design perspective. I mean, I think nine units is an appropriate scale for that, for the Village District.
The one thing to remember.
Those are just my initial feedback, of course, not having heard from any neighbors. I don't want anyone to panic that you have a vote for anything, because we haven't been proposing anything.
No, there's no vote required.
I mean, the theory behind it, I think, is very interesting, and I think is something that we should really think hard about.
So a couple of things that you made me think of when you were talking, April, a couple of things that we talked about the MPIC meeting, was that, that partial fifth floor is not an increase in units, because it's part of a duplex unit. So it's just allowing that duplex to go up a little higher. The other thing is, a lot of the analysis in our, that our committee did was focused on the western side of Adams Street and into High Street, because of the concern about some of the scale of the structures there. We, the MPIC itself did not, you know, the analysis that I did in, in building those three sites was chosen because of that trickiness of making that scale transition between Adams and High. But if you look at that elevation of the eastern side of Adams, it's totally different scale. And that's one of the things that when we first, Stephen first came in, I said, put that in the whole context of the street there.
Yeah, because you have the, you got the Mason, you got the Verizon, you got the Mason's building.
Yeah, there's another image that I thought was pretty before this.
Yeah.
Oh, that one?
Yeah, the one in the bottom left?
Well, the one up on the top, so you see, so you see all the 88 Warf, you see the whole commercial, you know, area, the Mason, the Mason's building, all that sort of stuff.
We zoom in on that one. Because that's the one that struck me, where when you're on Adams Street, you don't realize how many big buildings are there.
Yeah.
On that side of the street.
That's because when you're standing at the top of the hill, they're, they're small, and as they get larger, you go down with the topography.
Oh, really drops a lot, yeah.
It really blends well.
But that Verizon building is gigantic, and it doesn't feel it, yeah.
Yeah, because, well, yeah, I know.
If you go back to the elevation again, because the relative heights, I think they're interesting too.
That one is the big one on the top, I know.
So one of the things, again, the MPIC talked about was whether we, whether it would be advisable to consider a revision to the zoning on the height only on the east side of Adams Street, so that you could allow a half story on that side, because of the scale difference on this side of the street. That you wouldn't make that height difference everywhere else, because so much analysis went into the other side and High.
Is that why, did you ask him to make this bottom image? Oh, I see, okay. It's all coming together now.
Is that the only property that would be affected by this?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
On the whole street, it would be that one.
The idea is the others would only get, well, I guess potentially, there's a citizens' building here that could.
Because that's only one story.
Only one story, but that's the only other building, because the others, you know, that's right here, yep. And the two Adams, we already know is under a different overlay, you know, so that is much bigger anyway. This, and this would want to be restored. And there's no incentive in the zoning to do anything differently on those, because you couldn't even build what you've got, right? Yes, Rich?
Yeah, so, I, I'll start by saying a similar, I mean, absent hearing from the neighborhood and, you know, being that we just saw this, I'm not giving my opinion on it, but I will say that I appreciate, even though you said there wasn't a lot of, you know, this isn't really the design or it could change, and I'm understanding why you're saying that, but I appreciate the fact that you'd put in a lot of thought on the design.
Yeah.
Or what it could look like, because, you know, developments, not just here, that I've seen, a lot of times, they come with a big block, and they say, here's what we're going to do, and then we have to fight to get to this stage. And so I appreciate the fact that you're starting with this stage. And we can, you know, and with some refinement from the neighborhood and other folks, maybe you can get to even a better place. So I just, that's the only comment I have for now.
And just, I just want to thank you for that, because, so this made me nervous, because we're, I'm going further than usual, because I just felt like it would be helpful to see something, but our process isn't like, this is it. I'm used to, all those city projects was back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So I'm used to that, and, and we just, I mean, ultimately, it's, it's not, if it's never going to be one thing, and thousand percent of people are not going to be happy with everything, but really, we try to be sensitive to each context and do the best we can. So just, you're aware of that, I mean, I'm used to that. I mean, so, that's not like, that's it, but that's why we said informational and, and kind of want to get your feedback on just the concept of multi, multiple, multiple residential building. It's condominium building, is a, there's a commercial use, there's parking, and do people think that's, you know, a good idea? Or if you hate this, then we'll go home, so that's all.
Danny, you had a comment?
Well, my, my first reaction was a little bit, a moment of fear, because I really realized that this overlay could pass, and we could be hit with a whole bunch of projects. And it really made me feel like we, I really believe in the historic district. I think that's going to help us a lot, because my reaction was that it's a contemporary building in between two historic buildings. And, you know, I, I was, I was just a little thrown by it. So I, and, and I also, I, I felt like it was pretty box-like. I, I, I appreciate how hard you've worked on it. But I, and, and like April, I didn't quite know, we were talking about the two houses. Now, I was just looking at the swift hat.
I know, I was too for a minute, I was like, how can you fit nine units there?
So I was, so now that I caught up with you, yeah, so I, I could, I would be interested to hear what the Historic Commission thinks. And, and I was, I was really liking the way that Cheryl had some renderings that were, you know, the, they weren't so box-like, they were shaped, they were blending in, the step backs were blending in and, and being sensitive to what's around it. Now, I know next door, you have the Verizon, and that's very boxy, so I, I understand that. But something that would blend with the swift hat house would be more appealing to me. But the reason I was panicking was because that's my taste, and we need to come up with standards. So I'm thinking, I'm, I'm in the process more.
Yeah, so, just, just a little bit about that, is, you know, we've had a conversation that design guidelines would be, there's some standards in the zoning, but design guidelines might be beneficial as well in the district. But that would actually, if that were done and then the zoning didn't pass, it seems like it would be an effort that, you know, maybe money ought to be spent, you know, elsewhere. But if the zoning does pass, then design guidelines would definitely, you know, be something that would be, we've talked about wanting to do. And then again, sort of supporting, Liz, did I see your hand come up?
Yeah, I just want to add that we were also.
You want to come forward, Liz, Liz is from the Master Plan Implementation Committee?
MPIC, I'm learning about. It's a nice, cool way to say it.
Less mouthfuls.
Yeah, that, that sounds sleek. Do I have to give my address to you?
Yes, you do, you name an address.
Okay, don't find me, Liz Miller, 15 Cape Cod Lane, and I'm on that MPIC, the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So I was part of creating the suggested overlay zoning recommendations. So that's my disclosure. I think this is really an interesting project. Definitely, I am on the design side of things, so I understand that this is much further than a, you know, a concept. And the renderings are very well done. And there is going to be a lot of discussion about the actual design, but I think it's very beneficial to go to this phase, because people can react to a photo. And I think zoning is so hard to understand, because you can't see it. So a large part of what we tried to do with our recommendations was create some visuals around it. So it made me, the reason why I raised my hand was that even if we had those design guidelines, we were also trying to have some photos attached to that, so that it wasn't, we didn't have to do a lot of this to explain people. Well, right, so that you didn't start with that. And then also so that when people like yourselves came with, with the plan, that you knew the typography that people were already looking for. What, what, you know, when we went through all these exercises, we were talking about, you know, why we had people pick pictures of materials and houses and things that they liked, that was, that was why it was, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting this gentleman's name.
Steve?
Steve, when you, I was just, no, I was just saying that I, the reason why we were asking people at the beginning of this process long ago to look at different pictures about materials and roof lines and things, and what they liked, was that we wanted to try to make sure that if the overlay is, is accepted, that people, it could include design standards that would have some photos that would give architects and developers ideas of what people were, what people liked, basically. So that's a, a reason why the, the overlay, I think, could be helpful. The other thing I wanted to add was that I think this is a nice example of how the process would, would move forward. This is how I envisioned it, and Cheryl, you can speak more to this if, if you see this not working for certain sites. But because every one of these areas in the village is so unique, granted, yours has other interesting pieces to it, but I think almost every single one is unique in its own way, that I don't think the process would, would happen overnight. I saw almost every, this exact process happening, and we come to the planning board, the planning board would have multiple meetings, public input on what would be developed and how, and how that overlay zoning would get fleshed out. So that's my comment in support of this project, and then also in support of the overlay for the area, and in support of trying to preserve some of the historic buildings, because without the overlay, I fear that the historical character in buildings that are there are in more danger than if the overlay zoning is not there right now. I agree with you about historic districts and trying to get that passed, but I don't want to not have any protection for those buildings. What if the historic districts don't go through? You know, that's a strenuous process, that means a lot of people have to say yes to a lot of different things. So a year and a half is a good goal, but I could see it going longer than that. And then what if in that year and a half, something comes in this area and we have nothing to say about it? So I think we should go down both roads at the same time.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Liz. And Stephen, and.
Just a tiny bit more. I, I was also inter, I wasn't seeing or feeling any of the setbacks, or like room or green space, or anything. I was just seeing, there's, there's a footprint of what's available, and it's getting taken.
Well, I will say that this proposal, and I think I pointed out, it, you know, the zoning in the business district is basically zero lot line. There is a 12-foot rear requirement. Again, we have to look at what trade-offs might be worth it to save the swift hat. And that's kind of what this is really about. It's like, okay, that 12-foot rear setback, there is a butter, the rear of butter, and so there would need to be dialogue with the rear of butter, right? To see about what makes sense that doesn't, you know, have a negative impact on that rear of butter. But otherwise, the setbacks there should be, you know, thought of maybe a little bit more flexible. If the swift hat were being torn down, then, you know, it would be a different conversation, right? So what, what are we willing to kind of reconsider a little bit? If, if what we're getting in return is something that, you know, is, is that desirable? The other thing that I see is the FAR, so the total square footage that would be allowed. Again, you know, in this scenario where there's value to the restoration, there's cost to the restoration of the swift hat just to make a living room or, you know, a cafe, there's extreme costs to keeping that building and not doing anything over it. It's almost like you would sell the air rights over the swift hat and put them behind, you know? So these are sort of considerations of this site, and it may come up with other sites of some other, you know, sort of comparable kind of considerations. So it may be that we just can't get everything into the zoning, but this is a really good test of how the zoning may apply to one of these really challenging sites. And I, again, so I, I think we've provided some feedback for tonight, and I do, really do want us to be able to hear. I know there's a couple of other parties here, I want to see if they have comments for us, and then I want us to be able to get, again, a little bit of time. Our time issue is that this is our last planning board meeting before the select board closes the warrant on January 8th, so we want to make sure our zoning articles. 8th, so we want to make sure our zoning articles, um, we get to vote tonight.
Yeah, and we do, I just wanted to point out that in the Historic Preservation Incentive language in the overlay district, we do say that property fronting on Adams Street. So we did have.
Sorry, which page are you on? What section?
Section 4C.
4C, okay.
So it does say, "With property frontage on Adams Street."
A bonus, yeah.
"A bonus of additional allowable building height may be granted at the discretion of the planning board in exchange for preservation of an historic structure. And the square footage of historic structures preserved on-site shall not be included in the calculation of maximum floor area ratio." So.
There you go, on that part.
We've already got it.
That's on your FAR part, yeah.
We've already got that. So if you.
Just the height part and the rear yard then.
Well, no, the height part, it says you can have allowable building height may be granted, a bonus.
You can just only get it to 45 feet, which is something, we're going to come back to the total height.
Yeah, but I'm just saying is that we've got language in here.
We've built in language.
And it only affects this frontage on Adams Street. It doesn't go to High Street. It's just only in that particular area.
So this is a related question to that topic. So right across the street, would this affect the view to the water? In other words, the people who live on this street, that if they go up to 45 feet, now, now they're looking at something that's 55 feet, they can't see the water.
Well, how tall is the existing white building? Did you determine that?
I believe in the White House, pretty much, the White House block, when you look from your house across, the White House, you can't see the water from your, you can see the water through Suffolk Resolves, but you can't see it when you look at the, yeah, it's already, the White House is already blocking.
White House blocks it already.
Even the topography.
White House is already blocking it, yeah.
Bill, you had a comment or question?
The existing rear setback isn't 12 feet, it's only two to three.
The existing, right. Again, the Swift Hat sits on what, 600 square feet or 800 square feet, something like that?
Eight hundred.
Okay. All right, if, um, if you don't mind, gentlemen, I'll ask you to step back, and I just want to give the Historical Commission and the Housing Committee an opportunity, if they have any comments on the zoning, um, which has been, um, the presentation that the Empic made, that I made on behalf of our committee in September. Uh, that presentation's been online. I think the draft zoning's been online since then. And our board has made a few minor changes to it. I would say, um, the parking was, uh, one that some may consider minor, some may consider more major. Um, and otherwise, I think just, uh, we received some, uh, language from town council today, which I don't see as material myself. Um, so, um, we're interested in what the Historical Commission thinks about historical incentive, so bonus incentive to preserve historical. So this is a good example. So I don't know, Meredith, if you have any thoughts about that?
We haven't been prepared. We haven't formally been asked as a commission to form a statement, so I don't really feel like I should speak on behalf of everyone because I think people do have different opinions. I do want to.
If you want to come forward then, Meredith?
Yeah. I just wanted to do a 23B3 disclosure. I'm on the Milton Garden Club, as Meredith is, but I believe that I can be impartial in hearing you. It doesn't matter.
We, we were not prepared to make, Meredith Hall, 41 Russell Street, uh, Historical Commission member. Um, we were not prepared to make a statement. I'm here more to observe this evening. Um, I do want to say, and just speak to the Swift Hat Shop real briefly, that this, this is an extremely unique parcel, as are so many of these parcels. So when we're looking at a whole, it's, it is a little bit challenging to have an overlay because the topography is so unique and each specific parcel, some are historic, some are not. So you have sort of a mixed bag of properties that you're working with. I think what we were just presented with and the architect is exactly what we're looking for in preserving the, you know, the old historic buildings. Um, I do see a difference in the east side of the street versus the west. So when we're talking about addressing height issue, in the case with the Swift Hat Shop, to preserve that, I think it makes sense to give that additional height and especially in context with a Verizon building. I think that's really appropriate. But I think it is a really, um, this, you know, in overlay zoning, um, you know, do we need a complete overlay zoning? Or do we need to look at maybe a fewer parcels to start off initially and allow this to develop? I think that's the question is, um, do we want this to be entirely, um, all of the, the district as the business currently states and what you have mapped out right now? Or do we look at individual parcels like the Swift Hat Shop as just a very unique, very unique parcel? But, um, I think height restrictions are critical, especially particularly with, um, worrying about any assemblage of, of lots, that there really is, um, there could be a real massing issue in this area. So I think really keeping, you know, what we have in place is, is appropriate. So, and I think the Historical Commission would like to have more of an advisory role. Um, we're looking at different tools that could be implemented, um, on, by the town to have more oversight, more, um, participation, um, in design review, um, process. So, but other than that, we, we don't have a formal statement, but.
Okay.
That's so more personal than, yes.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Meredith.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the work you're doing too.
Does she know we signed the letter tonight?
I don't know if you were here.
Did you know that we signed the letter to the selectmen tonight to, that, to support?
Encouraging them to stand up the, the study committee for you.
That's great. And we're also, we're, we're open to other options because we understand that, um, sometimes a, a local historic district can really be viewed as very restrictive and, and that's not the goal. I think our commission really wants to see new development down there. We want to be very, um, you know, sort of proactive in seeing things happen. Um, we're also looking at, um, a preservation district, which the Mass Historical has put together, which is a softer version. It's much less restrictive, but it does allow more of a voice, um, from neighbors, um, that would sit on a board, um, in conjunction and work in collaboration with the planning board. It would be Historical Commission, it would be architects, it would be neighbors, and a, um, a commission board that when things do come, um, forth, that it is, if, you know, if Cheryl had to, you know, step down for some reason or was not, um, there, if there was not an architect on the board, it just gives a little bit more oversight and, um, and a conversation and dialogue to the development. So historic, uh, a preservation district is also something that we're looking at as a possibility.
Yeah, keep us abreast of that.
And we're working on that. We're educating ourselves as well. So.
Good.
Thank you for signing that letter, though. We appreciate it. And, and looking at different tools that could be utilized.
Great. I, I remember you, you had mentioned Ipswich.
Yes.
And I had, I had pulled that up. It was an arc. Um, what would the process, do you understand the process of what that would take? Would that take a year and a half as well?
No.
Or is that something that could go through faster?
And that's, that's what we're educating ourselves. Typically, I think in the case of Ipswich, it was a home rule petition that put it, um, forth. But I think there's different other ways, and we're working with Mass Historical on finding out that information, and we'll have that forthcoming. Um, the selectmen would appoint the, the board, so it'd be like any other of our local boards that the selectmen would appoint. It is typically appointed by the selectmen. And it's on, um, rotating terms, so not everybody would rotate off. Um, and it would meet only as needed. It's not a monthly, you know, it wouldn't be a board that would meet necessarily on a regular basis, but on a more of an ad need, ad need basis. And it would be public hearings the same way. So more of the process, um, we're, we're studying that and, and how it would be put, um, you know.
And would they have oversight or would they also be advisory?
They would have, it would be some oversight.
Depends on how you draft the legislation.
Exactly. And it would be really what our, what we would want it to be, um, in design guidelines that we would want. But we would want to work with the planning board. We would obviously want the selectmen to be in favor of this, and we would want it to be something that is, um, that would be very positive for, for that district, for commercial and residential properties.
And the Ipswich example did have a community member, a member from the neighborhood.
Yes, it's required, it's required as part of the board.
One member would be.
They, sorry, can I ask a quick question? Are they, is this type of group appointed for each type of a project or is it?
No. No, it's like a sign review board. It would be just, or a sign review committee. You know, it would be a, a standing board that when a project would come forth, we would say, yes, this is a great project, like what was just presented, or this is the direction that we're going. Um, you know, does this fit in with the neighborhood? Um, and it's, it's, um, it doesn't restrict people on renovations of their homes if they want to, you know, remove final siding and put up more, you know, appropriate.
What's the advisory part? I mean, not the advisory, what's the, I guess the teeth in it?
Well, you know, I, I'd rather not, I, you have so much to talk about tonight that it's probably better if we present this.
Yeah, it would be good. Because I guess I was going to something. I guess my statement, because in just hearing the back and forth, I, I mean, it's very interesting to hear more about it in the future. It's just lately, we've been hearing a lot from neighbors in areas and votes and things of saying, hey, if you're going, and again, this is my impression of what folks are saying in the town, if somebody is going to have a say on something, they should be an elected person. And so it'd be interesting to hear how you'll transform that into, if they do have some power there, that, you know, I would caution the whole appointed.
And it, really, the only, I think, what it comes down to demolition.
Yeah.
And it really is to protect properties that could be demolished.
Okay.
Is, is really the ultimate goal. It's a, it's a demolition, and we do have, you know, a 24 month, but, you know, it doesn't take long to run out that clock. So, so this is more from a demolition standpoint, I think.
Okay, I get it.
Or just, or restoration of some significant restoration. But again, we'll present that separately and what, don't want to interfere with this process right now that the planning board has worked so hard on. So, um, but yes, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thanks.
All right, and Melinda, would you like to speak to us regarding the affordable housing or anything else?
Um, well, I, I can keep it brief. Um, at the moment I'm here, I can talk to you as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. We didn't have a quorum for the Housing Committee this evening because you had one of our members and, um, and the other member was otherwise engaged. However, Katie Conlon is on the Empic, uh, so she's been, uh, well aware, very involved in, in that. Um, and so I, I think her, her interest in affordable housing in the Milton Village zoning, uh, is demonstrated. But the Affordable Housing Trustees didn't have time to read through all of Mr. Whiteside's, um, uh, comments and suggestions. Some of us did, some of us didn't. Uh, so we wanted to make a general statement that we still fully support affordable housing, uh, in this area. It is a smart growth area. It is, um, as an architect, uh, from the area, mentioned a prime spot for development, um, as development moves out from the city. And so, um, making sure that Milton, uh, controls as much as possible what that means, uh, and, and folding in affordable housing to that is, is, um, commendable. And I can't tell you how many times I have, uh, people come to, to me as an elected official and say, well, when I downsize, will there be something for me to live in, to move, do I have to leave Milton?
So to that, on, on that note, um, the, um, draft of the Housing Production Plan, which, um, I read recently and I attended one of their meetings recently and noted, um, that it references the overlay zoning and the, the fact that it can meet some of the housing needs, not just the capital A, but lowercase a, which is not SHI units necessarily, but also different kind of housing stock, different kind of family that might be occupying it. So maybe you could speak to that a little bit?
Right. Well, from a, a housing committee standpoint, well, actually, the Affordable Housing Trustees care about this too. It's just not really under their purview. But, um, everyone knows, uh, that values in Milton have skyrocketed, and we don't even have starter homes. A, a starter home is defined as $300,000 or less, and we don't have those. We actually have funds to help people buy a starter home. And we actually end up lending them out to our, our, um, neighboring communities who are in our home consortium. And that's wonderful because those funds get lent out and then they come back and they grow. Um, but at some point, we'd like to be able to use them to benefit people who live here. How, how many people have children who'd like to come back and, um, and start their families here? I, I feel as if that's a real Milton tradition that I've seen, that's becoming more and more difficult to, um, to attain.
And even people who work here. You've heard that too, right?
Absolutely. Well, I, our, our former, um, assistant planner was actually interviewed by Elaine in the newspaper, um, because she would have qualified for workforce housing, which is not big A affordable housing, but it's small A affordable housing. And so the people who, um, work in our shops, work in Town Hall, uh, people who do a lot of the service work in town, they should live among us if they choose to do so. Um, that's, that's how the real fabric of a society is healthy and strong and, and we can appreciate each other. So, um, and to have different income levels of people and different ages means healthier communities too. So Housing Committee is very interested in seeing that.
So on the agenda, just jump to that for a moment, on the Housing Committee Housing Production Plan update, the two of you, um, just for the planning board to remember that we will endorse or be a co-adopter of the Housing Production Plan along with the select board. So what's your timeline, you think, now for, um, having that final draft ready?
Um, well, actually Karen is just about, Karen Sonnerborg is just about wrapping up, uh, all of the, the changes and suggestions that we had gone through at our previous meeting last week. And, um, she should, everybody was supposed to have their changes to her Tuesday, so she should have it wrapped up by the end of this week. And then we'll be setting a hearing for, um, I'm really hoping sometime in January because we'd like, um, to present the finished plan and the strategies specifically because we had already, uh, presented at the forum, the front part that talks about the needs and, um, assessment of, of what we need in Milton. So the strategies and then also, uh, the unit counts, which is very important for, um, the, uh, DHCD to, uh, to look at in the plan. And, uh, we'll really need not only the planning board, of course, to sign off, and the select board, but we need to hear from the residents.
So just, um, again, kind of informational for folks who may be watching or folks even here who may not be familiar with it. The Housing Production Plan would, um, target strategies for how Milton might achieve 10% of its housing stock to be affordable, where as now, we're not quite 5%. And so we would be looking to see where this housing stock could come from. And there are some specific ideas in the Housing Production Plan, how to get there, right?
Yes, there, there are. And it's a five-year timeframe, but that, that timeframe starts in 2020. Um, so it, it's a, it's a challenge, um, no matter how you, uh, go at it. But, uh, but Milton Village zoning, it, it could really be quite helpful, and it really is one of the best, um, areas in town because of the access to public transit. And I think environmentally too. I know this is not a housing issue, but, um, that, that's really something to, to take into account.
Um, Liz, did you have?
I just wanted to ask that, um, something that I was learning being on Empic was, um, about why you want to reach that 10% threshold. So I just think for people who are watching, I'm sure you all know, but if you could just clarify that for people.
Melinda, you want to?
Right. So, um, under chapter 40B, um, we are required to have 10% of our housing stock, uh, as affordable. Uh, so that means that, uh, a resident or, or someone who wanted to buy, who had 80% of the area median income, which is defined, um, every year, we belong to an area of Quincy, Milton, and Braintree, I believe. So our area is defined a little differently than, say, other areas because it's the median, area median income that we're in. So it's 80% or below, you can have, um, access to special housing that, uh, if it's purchased, it would be deed restricted and, uh, the prices couldn't go above a certain threshold. And then if it's rental, those rents couldn't go above a, a certain threshold. So, um, and it gets very technical after that, so.
So we talked earlier about a 40B application for the Blue Hills Parkway and the Ice House. And part of that is that, that, that would help us get to the 5%. But it means that, And part of that is that that would help us get to the 5%. But it means that we may have other applications that are either bigger or not, but, you know, in places that the town might think are good or not. But we're susceptible to somebody coming in and deciding what they want to do somewhere, rather than us being a more proactive, yes, April?
Can I just add to that? So if you don't meet the 10% requirement, you're in violation of state law, which we are. And so the penalty for that is that developers can override our local zoning, which is the challenge. I mean, that's the big threat, right? So now we have this 40B proposal. They don't care that we have overlay zoning. We don't know what the state's going to say about that. But that's why I was saying earlier that if we don't get our handle on this 10%, every single neighborhood in Milton is at risk because there's very little we can do unless there's some sort of endangered species or, you know, some hack job of an application gets submitted, like this Parkway one. But I mean, it really is a townwide issue that we really have to get our...
We don't. We're just going to see more and more of these proposals coming in.
Well, the Housing Production Plan helps because it does give you a sum, a little bit, if we can show that we're making progress.
That's what, yes, that's the point I was going to make. There is sort of a stopgap measure that if we are actually making progress on the units now, but we're talking about 50 units a year, 48 units a year. That's considerable for a town of our size. And as far as this being a townwide problem, I'd like to say something about that as well. There have been challenges, even in my own neighborhood, 40B challenges. So every time that happens and something else gets negotiated, though that's less land, however, you're getting more housing units. So what happens? Our 10% threshold gets farther away.
Right.
And 2020, the census is coming out, and we're going to be even lower, because we were about at 5%. And now we're more like 4.92 or 3 or something, and you can see 4.9. So we're going to be below 4.9 because we have all the units over on Woodlot. You know, we'll have the units that Northland is doing on Canton Avenue. So now this is a little more difficult. However, the other thing I want to say is that sometimes a neighborhood has more disposable income than the next neighborhood. And I really see this as a townwide issue, too. But neighborhoods with more disposable income have greater access to attorneys and experts, and I think that they're more able to fight those challenges off. And I really would like us to get a handle on this so that we're being fair to everyone. So that, and that's a personal statement.
I completely agree with you.
Frank, did you want?
Ms. Collins answered the question.
Well, come on up to the mic, Frank. We miss you at our meetings, Frank.
I'm so happy to be here.
Are you announcing the reintroduction of My Town Matters?
No.
Frank's Road, 39 Avalon Road. I just had a quick question was, where is Milton right now with respect to the 10%? And Ms. Collins just said we're like 5% going on, maybe 4.9.
And we need 948 units.
That's a big number.
At the moment.
That's a big challenge.
We need 948 units. Our new Housing Production Plan says that we will create 48 units a year.
Right.
Seeing that we did four last year with Woodmere, we're a few behind. We were over five, but the discussion was right, that we've slid from 5.1 down to 4.9 because we keep building more single-family homes.
Well, one of the things that this leads to is which we're going to really have to defer to our January meetings is East Milton and the possible consideration of a 40R. But it doesn't necessarily have to be just East Milton. If there's any place else that could be deemed worthy of a 40R, it would help address the quantity, you know, because we get some state funding and we get a higher number in the development than our 10%, which is keeping us treading water, which is one of the reasons why we put an incentive bonus into this overlay zoning for Milton Village, is that we can help get us above the 10% on a particular project if we allow them additional square footage by that additional story.
Does the Housing Production Plan identify locations?
Yes, there are some, there are some locations, but also there are sites that, say, an individual might own that could be infill for, say, a Habitat for Humanity project. So those sites aren't named because we don't really know about those. And I've been wondering how we encourage people to do something like that.
Well, sometimes we've put in tax title parcels that are in, you know, that the town owns has taken them for taxes. And I did help the Affordable Housing Trust a while ago, look at something we thought might have worked, but it didn't. But that is one of the things that we've put into other housing production plans, is what we have in our inventory, but we don't, Milton typically doesn't have very much.
No, selectmen have that in their policy, though, of before it gets taken and sold, that it gets looked at by the Affordable Housing Trust.
So I'm sorry, I'm going to try and rein this back to Milton Village. But I do want, I did want the board to hear an update. And that would be, you hope, a joint meeting with the planning board in January, just to be clear?
Oh, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes. So it would be the planning board and the Select Board, and we would be presenting it. And also, as far as comments, the Affordable Housing Trustees are happy to comment on the zoning. We'll just have to forward them to you, but we can do it quickly.
Okay. Yes, April?
I just want to say thank you very much for coming, and thank you for your leadership on this issue. I couldn't agree more with everything you said tonight. So thank you.
And thank you all for your work. It's good to know you're here.
Thank you, Frank. Okay. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to the Milton Village zoning? Yes. Thank you for your patience and waiting.
Hi, my name is John Farusi, and I am an owner with my six other siblings of the 71 Adams, 75 Adams, and 26 High Street properties. I've been attending many, but not all, the planning board meetings and the M A P C meetings, the presentations on the overlay plans for the Milton Village. And I just wanted to say very briefly that we do support the overlay, and we just hope that it does get passed. As I mentioned, we own these three properties in the village. Right now, they're all commercial property. It's just straight commercial property, professional office space. And we could continue to utilize that space as is. And we have no problem keeping the buildings as they are because they're fully occupied. We've never had a problem renting out those offices. So clearly, that's an indication that the village is a very desirable area, very popular area, and you could easily attract both commercial and residential owners. So I really do support, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Roberts said earlier here about maybe revitalizing the village by redeveloping. And we are by no means anywhere close to what Mr. Roberts has done. We, my family hasn't even decided what we would do with that property, but we just see the potential. And we see that it, you know, the village could be really very well revitalized with these bylaws being passed. So again, we have no idea where it would take us as far as our property goes, but we just see the potential. We just think it would be a benefit to Milton and the village. But I grew up in Milton. I don't live there anymore, but I know the area very well. And I don't want to reveal my age, but I remember the Jenny gas station that Salty owned, right where the citizens drive up Telleras now. So I go way back in that area. I know it well, and I can appreciate the history there. And I can appreciate the need to try to retain the historical character of the village. And I agree with everything that was said here tonight. So again, I don't want to take any more time, but I just want to say, we as owners of property right in the village, we support these bylaws being passed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming. And again, thanks for your patience and waiting.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else? Yes, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Brian Bun. I'm at 139 Adams Street, right across from the Dolan Funeral Home. And I also happen to be the chair of the Milton Hill Neighborhood Association. And not that I represent a single voice, because there's many voices there, but I do say that because I talk to a lot of people, and I talk to them every day, walking up and down the hill, on the tee. But when we moved here about eight years ago, and what really drew us to Milton and Milton Village in particular, was the village and the thought that, the way it looked then, it looked like it was ready for development, and it was something that would develop over the years, restaurants and boutiques and coffee shops. We saw it happen in Lower Mills. We saw it Central Avenue. We saw it East Milton Square. Here we are eight years later, and nothing's happened yet. So we're very supportive personally. I think most people in the neighborhood are supportive. They want to see something happen, and I think they're generally supportive of the overlay. There are a lot of questions and concerns. People, despite the fact that, I think people in this room think it's been going on forever, I think people in the neighborhood think it hasn't been going on for that long, and still have a lot of questions. I think the process at times probably could have been better and making sure that more people were involved in the neighborhood. I personally feel that I didn't quite know what was going on at times, and really had to reach out to find out what was going on. So I think in order for this to get through town meeting, it's probably, I would hope for the planning board, that I would hope that it would really need the support of the neighborhood. And my fear is that if it gets to town meeting and it doesn't have the support of the neighborhood, that it might not pass town meeting. And I think this, all this work that you've put in for years and late nights would all be for naught. And, you know, that concerns me because I do want to see something changed down there. And I think one way to get the neighborhood more involved is perhaps to have a, either a working group or kind of a subcommittee, if, you know, someone from the planning board could meet with a few of the neighbors from Milton Hill, as well as from Milton Village, and perhaps from the Historical Commission as well. I know there's a vested interest there. Just, you know, in part to get some input, but more to answer questions, to make people comfortable, and to help them understand so that, so that people in that working group, subcommittee, whatever you want to call it, can go back to their larger group and let them know that, you know, we've spoken to the planning board, we've spoken to these people, and we're now comfortable with it. And I think that'll help relay some of the concerns that I'm personally seeing. And, you know, I'm a proponent of it. I'm trying to push it with my neighbors. I think it's a great idea, but I'm getting a lot of pushback from them. So I hope that's something that you would consider.
Can you give us a flavor of what are the concerns, just generally?
Questions?
I think that, you know, some of the concerns I'm hearing are, and I know this is entirely true, and this is where it would be helpful, is that we look at Dolan Funeral Home. And I know you measure the three or four stories off of the sidewalk, but everyone assumes you measured off of High Street. And so you kind of come down Adams Street or Randolph, and you're going to run into a four, four and a half story building, and it's going to stand out as compared to the others as you go down the landscape. And at the other end, where you have some of the more historic buildings and homes, will they be dwarfed by some of these larger buildings? I know, and I don't want to speak for the High Street people, you know, there's plenty of people that can speak to that. I know there's obviously a lot of concern there, that there's these very unique historic, lower one, one and a half story homes that, you know, concern they'll just be surrounded by these large, large mess, you know, large buildings. You know, other than that, I think, you know, a personal concern of mine that I've tried to make known is, you know, what do we look at for the types of stores that are going to go in? And I know right now there's, you know, there are general restrictions on used car dealerships and things like that that are never going to go in anyway. I look at banks and real estate companies as something that's most likely to go in. I know they're bankable tenants. They pay a lot of money for long term. But that doesn't, it's not going to drive foot traffic. My wife and I and kids aren't going to walk down to go see what, you know, go to the ATM or go check out the local listing. So, you know, we'd love to see little stores, and, you know, that's what we love about Lower Mills. And I think Central Avenue's coming along as well. There are a lot of concerns about the details. The parking is obviously going to be a concern, and the traffic. But it's just a lot of, a lot of little issues like that. So, and it's just, and it's not, I don't think it's anything that we can't overcome. It's just making sure that the information gets out there.
Well, it's kind of, I think it's a good point to sort of talk about, you know, if, assuming that we go ahead with this tonight, that, and it gets on the warrant, that, you know, we would think about, you know, getting a schedule of meetings and dividing it up and going to the neighborhood meetings. As a planning board member, people have questions.
In preparing, right, in preparing for tonight, I was talking with Bill earlier today about when language, final language would need go to press with the warrant. And that's likely March, you thought, Bill? And the planning board would need to hold public hearings on the language. What we could do in February. So that could give us at least a month to a month and a half of doing some of this outreach, you know, to look at revising, if so desired, the language. Then the public hearing would again give more opportunity to review the language.
Yeah, I mean, I assume that, Danny, you must have a schedule of when these neighborhood associations meet, and/or addresses for contacts, and maybe we make sure that they get invited to the meetings.
Well, no, I think we should, I think we do need to do public outreach. I just want to do a 23B three disclosure because I'm also on the Milton Neighborhood Coalition with Brian, so.
I'll just make one suggestion.
Hello, everybody.
I should laminate that.
I'll just make one suggestion to you, Brian, is that one of the things that, and MPIC, because I participated in these, we had last year, it's already a year ago, in December, three small working group sessions, and we, Lauren did this scheduling where we would have no more than 10 people so that we could sit around a table and kind of run through how the zoning restricts how much you can build and, you know, where you can build it, how that zoning actually works, to give you the images that you kind of can see from somebody applying the zoning. And those folks who participated, I think, thought that was very helpful. And then the other thing is I did a walking tour with the Historical Commission and was pointing out how things are measured, where they're measured, what the setback might mean there. And so we could do something similar to that, I think, to, and again, it's better to have it small groups because just it's easier.
People don't feel intimidated.
I think, Meredith, you were on the walking tour, right? And did you find that to be helpful when we were talking about the zoning?
I think a lot of the council members felt extremely helpful, and to be down on the side of the location.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I think in a setting like this, it's not easy to speak up and ask questions, and it's not the right setting.
I think also, it's nice to go to the neighborhood. You know, I think like when we did the Tucker School, I think that that's helpful. I did get two emails that, today, from people in the neighborhood who were saying exactly what Brian is saying, that they're concerned that it won't go through, and that the time that you spend with the neighborhood, bringing them along, would benefit you if you ended up at town meeting in the fall, because then you would have the full buy-in and so on and so forth. It's same, same exact type of comments as Brian.
Well, Sean, I'm happy to facilitate a few meetings with the Milton Village folks between now and February so that we feel like we've covered.
I mean, I think what we could do is, I mean, having been on this board for four and a half years now, is that some articles, you know, the planning board has even pulled back, suggested get pulled back themselves if they felt like there was so much change required in order to do it. But in terms of just having people understand it, you know, that's, you know, I think, explaining it, the MPIC did spend two and a half years and did hear a lot of comments and spent, and I think Liz could attest to, spent a lot of time considering those comments and how to adjust the zoning to take that into consideration. We spent a lot of time analyzing the underlying zoning, what could be built there, and how the overlay zoning actually in some, in many cases, allows less to be built than the underlying zoning, and it puts it through a special permit process. A lot of people don't understand what that means. But just explaining all of that, I think, like Liz said, it's actually more protection in the overlay than what the underlying has. And if people understand that, it might alleviate, you know, some of the worries that they have, concerns that they have. But even after through that process, if they feel like there's still reason that it needs more study, then, you know, that's worth doing that in order not to have a defeat necessarily. But I think just having an understanding is a good place to start.
Yeah, absolutely.
Liz? Liz?
I just wanted, that there wasn't, it was always meant to be-
Liz, can you come to the mic?
Also stressing that it was always meant to be an open process. It was never a closed-door meeting, or, we did have a lot of working groups, if people heard about them or not, or however information got shared or didn't, it was, at every meeting, it was always the intention that anyone who's involved should be notified about this, this, you know, the, we had small groups, but everyone was noti, we, the goal was that everyone was notified. So that should be delivered to neighbors as well, that, you know, there wasn't at any point trying to leave anybody out of the process, or-
It kind of seems odd to say this, but it almost seemed like there were just too many meetings, that, you know, you can't get to everywhere. And, and, you know, I, I tried to get to many of them, but I couldn't get to all of them, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this sounds like a good idea. It sounds more of like what you're looking for, maybe, let's have some meetings to say, here's where we've come, this is how we got here.
Right.
Now we're all on board.
Yeah.
Any last thoughts? Let's go to town meeting.
Exactly, exactly. And then, yeah, I think you'll, at that point, have the support of the neighborhood, and it'll be a no-brainer, and it'll go right through.
And even like a, like an FAQ might be helpful.
Yeah.
I like the format that we had when we did it before, I thought worked really well.
And I think, it, just on the community engagement part, I just want to also let folks know, I was on a call with Allison and Bill, with a woman from MAPC this morning, about a fiscal impact analysis and a community engagement session, it was like, like a, kind of, just like a staff kind of level, whoever would want to participate from the board, from their community engagement staff, about some suggestions in preparing for town meeting. So they may have some other ideas that would be useful, too. That, just so we know, that could cost $9,000. That seemed, the fiscal impact analysis, the community engagement is a small piece of that. It's mostly the fiscal impact analysis.
So I feel like the community engagement piece should be covered, and the fee, we already pay them every year, which is requirement of law, by the way.
Okay, so that, we can find out. I mean, that, I think is, like she said, that was a small piece of it, but because we talked about this fiscal impact analysis at our prior meeting, I wanted to look into it. And, Brian, thank you very much.
And one last thing before I go, just because I'm looking at the picture, and I happen to walk by that about four to five times a day, going to and from work and wherever.
And to see the real estate listings.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I may not love exactly how it looks, but I'm excited that they're thinking creatively, and they're putting something on the board. And I would definitely support something in this general nature. And we've been very concerned about what goes there, anyway, and I do appreciate, and, you know, I, I appreciate that, you know, Verizon Buildings here, and Mason's Building here, and there's that in the middle, and it doesn't look all that bad, love to see it a little lower, but I might be complaining.
And a bakery. And a bakery, right?
Bakery, yeah. It's going to be tough on my belly, but thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for, again, for you two, for your patience in, in waiting. All right, is there anyone else? Yes.
I think we need to move to stay later than 10, because it's 10 past 10.
I'm not making that right move.
I just, my babysitter's still with my children.
How much longer are we going?
I just wanted to give everybody here, at least, at least, and, yeah.
Hopefully he's the last person.
Well, I want to make sure, everybody, no, I want to make sure we feel self-
No pressure, no pressure, no pressure. Thank you for your patience in waiting, please, and take your time.
My name is Paul Kelly, I live at 86 Nehantham Avenue, and I own 11 High Street. Right now, it's all a commercial building, just want to say I'm supportive of the overlay, and for very selfish reasons, that it's, it will affect the value of my property, and what I intend to do with my property at some point, and that's going to be my, mine, my wife's retirement, since we're both independent contractors. So it has a, a major effect on what can I do, or cannot, I cannot do with my property. In terms of, the only thing that frightens me in any way that I've heard tonight is, some of the historic district talk is a little frightening to me. I've seen it, I did real estate in Cambridge for about 20 years, I've seen where it helped, and then, and it's her property values. My father-in-law was on the Historic Commission here in town, my, you know, my mother-in-law, I owned that building for 20 years, she owned it for 20 years before that, she was on the Warren Committee, school committee, my wife was on the school committee. So I have good, good roots in, in the community, and I, and I like that neighborhood, but it certainly needs a lot of things. That building, a bakery would be great. I'm awful, I don't know where to get my coffee, that's like, I'm going to walk all the way down to the central. But I do, I do support, there's going to be happy to spend some time, and especially, I like the idea of having small breakout meetings with the community and the owners. So, that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else here?
This is all shit.
Okay. Seeing none. I did receive an email from a resident and a real estate developer, and that is Matt Zoller. And Matt was kind enough to look at the zoning from a sort of a development performer perspective, to see if he felt as if the numbers work, basically, if he took a site. So he just took one of the sites that we had done the analysis on, and I'll just read quickly what he said. "As discussed, you have my full support as it relates to the Milton Village overlay. After a detailed look at the massing studies, I think a developer could create a financeable project if the proposed density and reduced parking ratios were put into effect." That's the reduce that we discussed. "Please let me know if you need any additional information from me." And best, Matt Zoller. Then he wrote back, and he said, "I also forgot to mention that this should be sent to town meeting for approval." So, I just wanted to make sure everybody heard that, because he could not come tonight. We received comments from Alexander Whiteside, and they're lengthy, they have some themes, so we can either go through those. I think it might be tough to go through every last line item in detail. We could talk about things that we, we think we can address, or things that we can't address. So I don't, if anyone has thoughts about that?
Well, I went through the, I went through the memo, and I also responded to Alex myself, and made a list of the points that he had raised, and he's right, and there's, you know, at least six that are all about parking. So that's sort of one clump. But his first couple of points were all about the fact that, as people have mentioned, that, you know, the overlay district is too large, and that it should be more site-specific, and, and those are the first, like, couple of points that he made, about the fact that he really wanted to sort of have a narrower scope, narrower area. I completely disagree with that idea. I think that it's been a problem for us to have zoning that goes through town meeting that is so site-specific and so project-specific, that when the project fails, there, nothing can happen with the zoning. You have to go back to town meeting and amend it again. And that just, you know, drives me, drives me nuts. But I also think that by limiting it, as he suggested, to just like, just this piece, or just the citizens' drive-through, or just that, we run into trouble where it gets to look like spot zoning. And, and I think that's a legal issue, and a legal problem for us.
So I- It doesn't address some of the sites that people here, that spoke to us tonight.
Right.
But I think he's trying to make the point that we do, we've done lots that have been very successful, 36 Central Ave, 88 Wharf, Carberry, I mean, those are all very site-specific.
I wouldn't describe 88 Wharf as particularly successful. I mean, yes, I mean, it doesn't have any affordable housing.
That's, that's right, but I, but I mean, there have been, I mean-
Yeah, but I, I see, I see that point, but I also see the fact that we have the, the project that we voted for, the elderly housing on Randolph, that fell apart, and now that zoning can't be used.
That's why I don't know about it.
That can't be used. The Ice House, perfect example of zoning that got adopted, that isn't being used. No, that was zoning. But, but you do it so specifically, that, you know, you adopt the greatest states, and it doesn't apply to all the greatest states, it only applies to the one that's at, that's before you, that doesn't make any sense to me. So I think that the overlay district is, is fine the way it is, and, and I think that's the point of an overlay district, is that it covers an area, and not so small that we're wasting our time with it. And then he has, he mentions a number of things about the current business zoning being, needs to be revised, and that's not part of this project. But he's right. He's right.
He's right, it needs it, but it's another article.
But that's another article.
It's a separate difference, it's a separate thing, but, but I think one of his points is that if you update this and not that, then you're at risk for that being implemented, because this is being implemented. He's just pointing out, like, the relationship between the two.
Yeah, but I think that's not, that's not the scope of this discussion. We're voting on overlay district, we're not dealing with the underlying zone.
I mean, I think we could put that on the list of zoning articles to address, that we keep that running list.
We have a list, and that was a good point.
I mean, one of the challenges is that, on the underlying, is that we have actually four districts, and you, you need to carefully look at, if you change the underlying, that you're doing it, and it's appropriate for all those districts, unless you carve out and make different districts. So what's the big office building, it's its own district, Bill, if we forget the address?
Two Granite.
Two Granite Ave.
Two Granite, so people probably don't even realize that's a business district.
They don't realize it's in Milton.
They don't realize it's in Milton, right. But East Milton, Milton Village, Central, and that, you can't just change something and only thinking about one of the districts, and you have to think, you not think through the other districts. So it will take time to, to look at that, I believe, but we can put it on the list.
But it's worth pursuing.
Yeah, and certainly, I put that on the list, along with the condo conversion bylaw, and the accessory unit bylaw, you know, and there's a number of things that we could be working on. You did point out that we don't have any frontage requirements in this overlay district.
Before you get to the frontage one, Bill, you have a photo, of a historic photo of Five Canton Ave, right?
I do.
And Five Canton Ave didn't always have a retaining wall, so I actually think, and what we always assumed is that the, the way the frontage would be calculated, there would not be from the parking lot that's coming, and it would not be from High Street, because the additional height is only allowed if you front on Adams Street. So it's measured only from Adams Street, so, Brian, that, that's a critical thing to understand, is that bonus only applies to Adams Street, 35 feet on High Street, which is the same thing as the single-family districts everywhere in town. Oh, okay. So this is a historic photo of Five Canton, and this is Adams, and this is Canton here. And you can see it had an entrance right on Adams, and without a big stone retaining wall. This was an inn, the Voege Inn. And the inns in those days had restaurants, right? So it was a place somebody could, hmm, pick up shelter for the night and get some food, right? And some drink.
One of those little signs says, "There's a tailor in this," I'm going to.
I, just a quick question. So I, I'm glad you brought three, because I was going to bring up that comment, but I guess my question is more, so Alex was, went on to talk about in number three, that maybe we, the town should reach out to the owner and see what they have plans for, to see if development ideas which might warrant some site-specific, I don't really, I guess my question is, do you, do we know what he was thinking there?
Well, we've, we've been in touch with the owner of this property, and he's, and he's following it carefully to see if it would make sense for this parcel.
Well, I guess what I was trying to figure out, what, what Alex's thought was in, was it, and again, I'm asking a question that we probably can't answer, but was his thought that we might build something in here to make it more appropriate?
I don't think we know what, what, what person wants. And, and seriously, once you start saying, oh, let's add into the zoning something site-specific-
I was just curious of what he was getting at, that's all, I mean.
Well, I mean, I think, the, the thing I think that is misunderstood about this, is that you're measuring it from the parking lot, and you're, and that all has to do with scale. And that's why I wanted to be clear, that the bonus, so 45 feet, only applies to Adams Street, and at the sidewalk grade, so not at the top of a wall grade. So you don't get to be top of the wall plus 45 feet, you're 45 feet, if it's sloped like this, from the median, 45 from the median, not 45 from here, not 45 from here, but 45 in the median. And so that should alleviate some people's concerns about what you see. That's, that site honestly is a challenging site. I looked at that site, it's one of the three in, for, for the MPIC. I looked at it, when I say, I looked at architecturally, to see what I thought could fit there. It's a challenging site, too, and it'll, it'll take some work, like Stephen's done on the Swift Hat, to come up with something that really works there. But I think the zoning is clear about how the scale of this site will be determined, so I don't think it needs to be carved out separately.
I just don't, as I said, as a general rule, I just don't think it's a good idea to carve out lots.
I think the other one, on the historic part of this street.
Yep.
From Canton Ave down to Elliott Street, if you go back and you look at Anthony Samarcos' books on, on the history of Milton and the architecture in this area, the hill has been filled, it's been cut and filled in so many different areas. Go back and look at, when John Ferrucci came up and said, you know, his, his family owned this piece, go back and look at it before they owned it, it's in that book, and you see that they've taken and filled the different areas in and around. They've had to taken, look, look at how sharp that hill comes up right now. Well, they flattened out the hill, because they, they flatten it, they bring it around the corner, and they put in the retaining wall. You can see that the store, or the entrance to the tavern is right on the sidewalk. There is no wall there. Right now, go by it, and there's a wall about three-plus feet high.
Or with the other thing that they sent.
So, but looking at the historic photo, and looking at the other historic photos, I forgot to send that one historic drawing. It, it looks as if this was filled in. So in terms of that being expensive to remove, it's not likely expensive to remove, and, and the economics are up to the developer to decide. We know how we're measuring the height, and it's not from the top of the wall.
But we also, we're thinking about-
Guys, let's keep one conversation going, you want to add here?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
What number was that, I'm sorry?
That was three.
Number three.
All right. Where, where are we, this is going to take a long time to get through. I mean, how, how far are we going with this?
Okay, so I guess, you know, there were some general overarching comments, like parking was like six of these, and sort of site-specific aspects of it were another part of it. So I guess the question is, how much further-
He has 24 points, and it's 10:30.
Well, I, as I said, six of them are about parking, which is all-
Right, well, they're, they're, they're about business parking versus other things of residential parking.
So, so the question I have is that tonight's the last night for us to act on this, before the selectmen put the warrant together, right?
And let's be clear, we receive these comments on Saturday.
Right.
And staff got them on Monday.
I had-
It's Tuesday.
And I was getting comments today, two hours before, and I did, I got the most recent version a couple hours before the meeting.
And as I said, this language has been on the website since September.
Right, and it's been changing, and the public didn't even get the, the current language, the current language isn't on there, and I, I, I'm two versions behind.
The only changes that this, that have been made by this board had, had a minor thing to do with saying that the appropriate design professional should be a registered architect, and changing the parking from a staggered one for studio one-bed, and one and a half for a two-bed, simply a one parking space per unit, and changing the business from two per thousand square feet to one per thousand square feet. Those were the only changes.
Yep, and I would simply just address them, he had a lengthy comment on the affordable housing, and I am completely opposed to putting in anything more than what we already have in the language.
Definition, you mean?
Yes, because affordable housing, there's any number of ways you can do it, and I don't want us be locked into something as rigorous as he has suggested. And I also want to make just a minor amendment to number seven, to say that it would be subject to-
Bill, do you have the language?
Subject to a perpetual deed restriction, and if applicable, a regulatory agreement.
How about number six? Sorry to jump around.
Yeah. So, were you talking about number seven and Alex, or number seven and the zoning?
Seven and me, and seven and the zoning, I'm focusing on the zoning.
On the zoning.
And, and, and folding Alex's comments into that.
All right, so number seven and the zoning.
And number seven, I would propose to make- And number seven, I would propose to make a change in number seven, to say in line three, that it's subject to perpetual deed restrictions and, if applicable, a regulatory agreement. And I would suggest the same change in the third line from the bottom. So the special permit shall state that occupancy permits shall not be issued until the regulatory agreement, if applicable, and the affordable housing restrictions are recorded. You only get a regulatory agreement if you have financing. If the Affordable Housing Trust purchased a unit with some cash that it might have, it could just buy a restriction. It wouldn't have a regulatory agreement. That's only if there's financing. So I just want to make sure that we're not requiring a regulatory agreement where there won't be one. So I just want to make sure that that's flexible. So, so that's my minor change on number seven. And as I said, going back to Alex's comments, is that, you know, he's, he's, he's just putting in a lot more language in this than we really need. And all the other zoning that he's drafted for other districts is just sort of said, well, you know, they get on the SHI. I'm looking at the one for what he's got here, what we did before on Central Ave, is it just says, whatever affordable units have to be 80% affordable and get on the SHI. So why would we be adding all that detail now, in this one? It wasn't in Central. And they actually did affordable housing. So that's my change on seven. And, and as I said, he, he just, we have this issue about the parking, and, you know, I know he's talked about the fact that if we, if there is parking that's off-site, that, you know, it needs to be deeded, and, and that's a whole legal issue that we don't really want to get into.
So Kathleen, on the parking, in, in looking at page, on the zoning.
On page, number eight, business parking?
I just want to hit a couple of items on Alex's before making another suggestion. But on the, on the business parking, we, in the first paragraph where it says one space per thousand square feet, it's saying that in the context of the absence of a specification of the business use. But then it further says, when an actual business use comes forth, that it refers to section 7C in the zoning, which is the requirement to have four spaces per thousand square feet. And further, it says, and if you know the particular business at the time of the application, you're supposed, you're supposed to refer to section 7C. So we're not getting, we're not really applying our one per thousand fully in the, in that language.
I have a suggestion. To make it simpler. So that what we would say in line two, we would cross out, in the absence of specific specification of the business area, business use in the application fee, in the application for, take that all out, all the way to one space. So insert, take that out and insert instead, with the exception of restaurants and bars.
Hold on.
Before we recraft all the language, can I?
I can't do, I can't type that in here.
I know, all I'm just saying is that.
I'm looking at that screen and trying to type this in, I can't use the screen.
All right, we doesn't have to type it, just listen through it.
No, you don't have to type it, just listen to what I wanted to say, is that to make it simpler, I don't think we need to talk about the different business uses and all that sort of stuff, we want to just say it's one space per thousand, and, unless it's a restaurant or a bar, or without a bar, in which case you want to say one space for each four patron seats. So you don't need to have all that, whether you said it, or you didn't say it, or it wasn't specified, or all that sort of stuff, I just say, why don't we just make it simple? That it's just one space per thousand, unless it's a restaurant or a, a bar. And give the planning board the ability to decide, you know, how they want to have that work.
So then would you be eliminating where it says?
Refer to section.
Referring to section 7C?
Yeah, yeah.
So you would get rid of the words thereafter each business use undertaken?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so then if you took that part out.
Can I make a comment on parking overall? Like, we're, we're starting so much lower than where we've done before, like 36 Central Ave. What about if we started the requirement high, and then we could waive it low, if we chose to waive it low, but we would still, as a planning board, have the opportunity to keep it higher? Do you know what I'm saying? So, you know, if it's a business that's going to be drawing traffic and parking needs from outside of town, and, you know, bollocks-ing up everything for the citizens, we can say, no, we really want the requirements high. But if we say, well, there's some benefit here because it's historic, there's some benefit, then we have the freedom to waive it lower. But if we give it away all at the beginning, I'm afraid we can't get it back later.
So I think that's the answer, Denny, is that I don't think we can get it. So I think if we had four per thousand, you'd never, we'd never be able to park eight projects.
You can't park that on these projects.
And my fear with your proposal, well, it makes sense, is that somebody looking at a site will say, oh, it's four per thousand, I cannot get there and move on to another site, you know what I mean? It's sort of like, it's an easy reason not to pursue anything.
Because the process with the planning board would be considered a risk, because they're only going to rely on trying to get the planning board to not do four, and that's going to be a perceived risk to the, you know, to the person who would be interested in doing this project.
I mean, I, I think one spot per thousand square feet is pretty standard in an, in an area like that, and I think it would work, and I think four per thousand is just going to be overparked and render all these projects not feasible. That's my feeling about it.
Cheryl, after we spoke today, and we got off the phone with Betsy Cohen, I did, I did spend some time researching some different areas that have implemented some kind of smart growth or business district in all of them. Just to make sure that we were, you know, dotted dollarized, all of them had a parking reduction, and all of them were supported by alternative modes of transportation, the T or whatever. And one of the ones I looked at, which was Canton, saw 75% increase in public transportation from the population that lived in that area. So the people who bought and lived in their smart growth area utilized public transportation as their regular means.
75%?
75% of the residents. So I thought that was kind of.
Yeah, that's interesting data, thank you.
Is that right by the train?
I'm, I'm not sure which train, I, it's, it's in their smart growths.
Their smart growths.
So they're all, all of the projects I looked at had some kind of mode of transportation other than your car, so it had to be supported by something else.
Right, right.
Which in this case, I think we do with the.
They have smart growth districts in Canton. But this, this is what they have.
All right, so one thought I have, folks, given the hour and given people's concerns about getting through the comments, are we open to having a meeting in, let's say, on the sixth or seventh of January, rather than the ninth? I'd be respectful of people's concerns, but, and also respectful of kind of timeline.
Okay, I'm looking, I think that could work.
The sixth and the eighth, I have meetings in Boston that were supposed to be tonight and Thursday. So I apologize, that would move.
So the seventh would be okay for you? I mean, you probably don't want to be gone three nights in a row, but, I mean, we could also.
I don't.
Yeah, I could do that.
Schedule around me, I'll try to find a way to make it work.
Okay. Bill, what else had we targeted for the ninth? That if, that could be, we could try and limit, so.
But, I mean, I, I think, I think we should probably take our vote as to whether or not it's going to go to, because, because one more night, I don't think is going to change my opinion, and I don't know that one more night is going to change your.
But the thing about that is, we can work on some language, and I just, the language that we vote is the language.
Well, if Denny's saying that she wouldn't be working on language for the next two weeks, and she still won't be voting for it, well then, you know.
Okay, that's fine, I just.
I'm, I'm not opposed to the overlay, and I'm not opposed to revitalizing it, but I do think that we need more time on the community outreach aspect of it. We haven't had a site walk, we haven't had a public meeting to hear from the community since a year and a half ago. We haven't read through the whole document as a full board.
Excuse me, we had a very big public meeting, at least 50 people attended in September, so.
Well, that wasn't the planning board's meeting, that was MPIC transferring it over to us. That wasn't our meeting, that wasn't a planning board meeting, that wasn't when we were all caught up yet, that wasn't a public meeting by the planning board. Before we send an article to town meeting, we, I, I haven't.
It was posted, planning board meeting, but in any case, okay.
So I think this is a sort of unusual circumstance, because I think to the normal resident, I don't know that they really know the difference, you know, I think they're thinking of a public meeting, I don't know if they're monitoring whether it's MPIC or planning board, so I, you know, to the point that there's almost been too many meetings, I feel like, I don't know. My, my feeling is that I agree with you, we haven't, this body itself hasn't had its own public meeting, but I do feel like there's been quite a bit of engagement, whether people chose to participate or not, I don't know. I have another suggestion for another sentence that I'd like to change on the, on the topic of mitigation, but I think Denny's point is right, maybe we should just take a vote about an informal straw poll, and whether or not we're inclined as a board to move it forward or not move it forward, because if there's going to be another.
I just, I just want to explain why, because I'm not opposed to the overlay, but I just, you know, I don't want to do a placeholder that, you know, we move along before it's quite ready. You know, the last few times that we did that, like the traffic mitigation, we ended up never getting around to going back and fixing it, when we acknowledged going into it that we weren't ready, we weren't ready, and we just kept pushing it right along, and we, it's just, and then, you know, the town meeting members expect us to vet these articles before putting them forward. They should be letter perfect before we, you know, go forward, and we, we should be having, everything that we're talking about doing next, we should be doing that and then finalizing the language. It's kind of like we're picking out the, you know, the shutters before we've, you know, built the house, you know what I mean? So I'm just, I think zoning language is really hard, and I just, I just, I think we should have that, we should have some sort of historic protections in. The Historic Commission wasn't even ready to give their input or suggestions yet, because they, they didn't even.
Oh, let me ask, just let me tell you about that, though. MPIC asked for an official opinion from the Historical Commission, and they declined that request, they said they didn't want to have an official position.
And they legally can't.
Okay, well, I'm just explaining to you where I'm coming from, I think it's okay for us to disagree, and I think we, I think we're going to be on the board for a number of years, so I hope it's okay that I feel differently, but I feel this is rushed.
I totally respect your.
And I, I feel like I've heard from a bunch of citizens who have said that they think that they could use more time, and they, they don't, they think, you know, they raise good questions about, is it going to make it through town meeting floor without the neighborhood's support? And we don't know if we're going to get that support yet, because we haven't done it yet, we haven't done it as a planning board. I, I respect Cheryl has done a great deal with, with MPIC, but it was a different.
But we've had our own meetings here, I mean, this goes back to what I said.
We fitted in a half an hour here and a half an hour there, but we've never had a public hearing where, you know, this was the most we got, and it's, it's like 10 o'clock at night.
As I said, at town meeting, we, we publish agendas, we have stuff on the website, we have meetings, they're televised. Why anybody would even watch them, I have no idea, but, you know, we do all that, and at the last minute, it's always like, well, nobody, no, we didn't have any neighborhood outreach or something like that. Sometimes, I mean, people came tonight, and, and we thanked them for that, that was terrific, and people have come other nights and talked about this. And so to say at the last minute, when we've said all along, this is the deadline for getting this sort of vote to get it on the town meeting.
I told you at the last two meetings, I had six pages of comments that we chipped away at, but I never got through them, I mean, we never, I, I mean, I, I just think we're going to have to disagree on this.
I just, and I can appreciate, and I feel the same way, I mean, I can appreciate everything you say, I, I just worry, though, if we say, go ahead and take a vote, I, I mean, I agree, we did, you know, the note's been out there, and we got some last-minute comments, but we got them, and I think they could come up at town meeting, or there'll be questions, and if, if folks are able to meet, I would, wouldn't be opposed to it. Maybe it might not change the vote, but if we can add some language that can make someone happier about what it is, or defer like three or four hours at town meeting, just to, like, why not hash it out now, why not talk about it, why not change some language? Sounded like you didn't agree with some stuff, but it sounded like you might have agreed with some stuff. I would say, instead of saying, hey, let's just rush a vote, and you say, well, fine, we won't need to change that stuff, why not change the stuff?
No, I'm just saying, is it, if, if the idea is that, but on the seventh or night, where we're trying to fit this in, I've got two other places to be that same way.
I'd be rated, yeah, I mean, it's a tough time, but I'll make it work.
I'm totally, I'm totally on board with that, but I was trying to say, is that if the, if the situation is that even if we do all that, there's still not going to be any support for it, then.
You might not, and I'm not saying you, but it's, you might not get any support, but you might make us happy, folks happier that we've changed some things.
If I send her chocolate, will she?
Well, I mean, the reason. I'll work on seventh, I'll work as hard as I can work, I'll make it the best I can.
I'd like to make it better.
Okay, I'm just saying.
I mean, I have at least one edit, I'd like to hear what other people's edits are, but I thought you said our, our final language wasn't even due until February or March.
Well, no, well, what I meant is it goes to print, but what we send to the select board will be the language that is our article, and then, if the, we want to make revisions, we will ask the warrant committee to make the revisions through their recommendation. I don't know if you, Rich, you understand that, too, from having been on the warrant committee. So that's why I would like the time to work a little more on the language, so that we have less change come from what we know at, at the moment, that we agree on wanting to kind of address. So April already know, April already knows she has something, Kathleen had something on the parking we want to look at, I want to talk about the height a little bit, and there was another thing I wanted to talk about based on Alex's comments.
Yep.
And, so I think we could get that done.
Yep.
And it won't address the community meeting that Danny referenced.
But we are planning on.
But we will still do that, still do that community outreach piece, we still always have our public hearings on our zoning after our language is submitted to the select board. That's the way we've done it, whether that's the best way to do it or not, I guess.
The usual requirements.
But we've also had public hearings prior to that, just so you know.
All of our meetings are public.
There are public.
No, I know they're public meetings, but the public hearing on the subject, the public hearing on the subject, where everybody knows, they come in, they see, they see the language, they have it before they get here.
That's always our public hearing, that's after the language is submitted.
People haven't getting the language before the meetings, they, nobody get the lang, this is all on the website.
This language has been posted on the website for months.
This lan, today's language that I got this afternoon, was posted in the language.
Well, town council's changes came today, and it all they.
It wasn't for weeks, because I went looking for, for weeks. There were, there were a number of weeks it wasn't available, but that's, but that's not my point, my point is that, anyway.
Well, so we're looking at the seventh?
I can do the seventh.
So my point is, that will mean I'm out four nights that week, and I have a 7:15 AM Capitol Planning Meeting. If it has to happen.
Only this.
I mean, I guess I can make it happen, but if we don't have to have language, and we're having a public hearing, and we're going to make edits anyways, do we have to do it that week?
Probably not.
Well, it's just that they closed the warrant on the eighth, so we, it's just.
What I'm saying is.
But you're going to change it.
We're going to change it anyways, because people are going to have other comments during the public hearing, so there's going to be adjustments, and I'm just thinking.
At what point can we not change the scope? Because that's, that's what, that's where we get trapped.
We're not changing the scope, you can't, you're not allowed.
These things that we're talking about.
We're talking about changing the language as we go through public hearings.
That's not changing the scope.
Changing the heights, changing the parking, not changing the scope.
Adding amendments to the business district under. Adding amendments to the business district underlying, that's changing the scope. But all the other comments that Alex made are things that can be accomplished, not expanding the scope. Looking at the underlying zoning for business district, not in the scope. But everything else can be considered, and we could.
All the way up until...
Yeah, those are the sheets that you get at town meetings.
Green sheet at town meetings is not ideal, but that's what...
So what I would like to say is I would rather avoid a green sheet because that's not really fair.
It's horrible, yeah.
But I do think that a warrant committee recommendation with some modest changes that make, that we believe makes the article stronger based on public comment is appropriate.
I do, too.
And I'd rather not, for personal reasons and for our board, try to rush through to what we say is a final amendment in this extra meeting when we're already meeting twice that week, to then just go ahead and make additional changes.
We'll do it twice. I agree with you. We'll end up doing it twice. We'll end up doing it on the seventh, and then we're going to do it again in front, after the public talks.
We definitely are.
I agree with that. That wouldn't be appropriate.
I agree.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the consensus opinion is. I do think that if there's a general sense that we are moving forward, we should figure it out, how to make this a more thoughtful discussion, with this being the primary agenda item at a different meeting, preferably not on the seventh.
No, no, I agree.
I mean, if people don't feel comfortable moving it forward, we should know that, too, I guess. I mean, my personal opinion is that I think it's in good shape. I think that we heard a lot of positive things tonight. I think there are neighbors that are concerned. Sounds to me like a lot of the concerns are maybe a misunderstanding with what this means, and maybe it isn't. But we have a lot of time between now and May, or when is our town meeting? First week of May? To talk to people and try to educate them on what exactly this means and do sitewalks. And maybe we get there, and maybe we don't. And maybe at the end, we just decide we're going to withdraw the article, which isn't ideal, but it's better than just rehashing for six hours at town meeting floor.
Well, I also think that, well, fundamentally, I think you're, if we're saying yes, we're moving forward, that it's the idea of, the idea of doing this, overlay zoning. For me, I think it is, I like it. I like the idea. I mean, I'm excited about talking about it in my area because you need protections. We need to think about, if you could comment, somebody said earlier, it's let's get ahead of it. Let's tell people what we want to have in our neighborhood.
And Alan earlier.
Yes, it was, sorry.
Alan earlier.
Let's get ahead of it before other people come in and do it to us. And so fundamentally, I'm really excited about this, want to move forward. But I do agree, and now that you've said that, that makes a lot more sense than to come here on the seventh, than to go through the process and then do it again. We're going to end up having multicolored sheets.
But you don't think we should have?
No, we shouldn't have that.
And that, I think, is your point, Denny. Like, we need to be more transparent.
Right.
Maybe we're not going to get exactly the, we don't change any words.
And I don't want to fly through Alex's comments either because I do have a lot of questions.
No, I don't either. That's how I feel, yeah. And I think it was very thoughtful of him to take the time.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Oh, no, absolutely. I agree, too.
All right.
I was just dealing with my deadline. Because I'm a real estate attorney, so I'm like, okay, close the house by the month. So I apologize, but, you know, as I said, I have, we had a deadline. And I'm like, oh, my God, we got to get that done.
Well, it's hard. People are busy and they're not always paying attention. I am one of them. But I do like it when people come out, even if it's the last minute. So I think we should encourage that. I don't, though, know that we should not proceed.
It's like a word.
Yeah, I got to go. I have a babysitter at home.
All right, so then if there's, it sounds like there's consensus that we should have a vote tonight. If that's the case, then we have to decide, is it the language that was distributed earlier today without any amendment? And then that would include town council's comments. And then anything that you talked about tonight, we will pick up so that we have a chance to look at.
We just have that one, minor one to seven.
Okay, that's fine with me. Maybe if, saying that affordable housing...
If applicable.
If applicable.
Seven.
Affordable housing units, number seven.
No. And you put it in there already. We put it in there.
You wanted it in number eight, you also wanted...
We're not doing number eight yet, just number seven.
I said number seven.
So take out that piece on eight.
On the parking, we'll come up with language for that.
No, we're not even going anywhere near eight.
We have more to do on eight than that.
This is why I don't want to write zoning at 11 o'clock at night.
I put it in, I have to take it out now.
You put it in. No, no, you put it in. Leave it there.
No, he put in the parking thing, too.
Oh, okay, take out the parking thing.
But I agree, I think that we should put this on our agenda first.
Yeah, because people stay here, they're always last. It's always last.
Okay, so, but we have to take a vote tonight?
If we're going to get it before the warrant closes, so that's, that's either...
Yeah. I would move to submit the Milton Village overlay district to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on the warrant.
The 1217 version with town meeting...
With town council's comments and my one change to, two changes to number seven.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Yes. We need to make sure that goes, this goes on the website, like, fourth way.
As soon as Kathleen gives me what she did in seven.
You already have it in seven. You just did it. Allison put it in, if applicable.
Did you put it in?
No, you were typing, I think.
We'll send it to you.
We'll figure it out.
We'll send it to you.
It'll be up in the morning.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
And we're still friends.
And before you go, just before you go, buddy, I want to give you one quick update. East Milton zoning, we're having a conversation with Judy Barrett on Thursday. Is that right, Bill?
Yes.
Thursday. So we will have, that's the dilemma, guys. I guess on the ninth, we'll have a discussion about what her recommendations are for next steps with Milton, East Milton. So we don't want to delay that to the 23rd. This is what becomes our problem with our agenda and items. But I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.